Oh, it's seven. Okay. All right, uh, we'll go ahead and do a call to order. Let's start off with community concerns from residents. Anybody, the residents have any community concerns that they want to bring up to the board tonight? Uh, is this in relation to the Catholic Charities? Uh, yes, but you only have three minutes.
Oh, Chair Wood, it's on the agenda. Um, recommendation is to let Honolulu Fire Department report first, along with police, per the neighborhood plan.
Okay.
Uh, if you could take that out of order, just so fire can give their brief report, please.
Okay, okay, yeah, well, hold on. Board have any objections to the reorder of the agenda? Okay, no objections heard. Okay, Honolulu Fire Department? Thank you for showing up. Appreciate it. Please, sir.
Hello, and thank you for having us. My name is Captain Sisternus from the IAA Fire Station. Uh, thank you for, thank you to the board for having us go first. Appreciate that, and sorry for cutting in front of you. Okay. We're here to give you the, uh, the statistics for the month of February for our emergencies. We had, in the month of February, we had five activated fire alarms, five rubbish fires, one brush fire, and one structure fire. In other emergencies, we had ten motor vehicle collisions, three of them involving pedestrians, and we had one hundred and thirty-five medical alarms that we responded to. Um, our fire safety tip for the month of March has to do with, uh, fire, or smoke detectors, sorry, and the role they play in, uh, your, your family plan for escaping the house during a fire. Uh, the tip goes on to say that, um, you should call smoke alarms in every bedroom and outside each sleeping area, so pretty much bedrooms and hallways, and, uh, test them monthly and replace them when the test fails or, um, or after every ten years. That is our monthly tip and our statistics for last month. Do you guys have any questions for us?
Board members, any questions for Honolulu Fire Department? Anybody online, Curtis? Okay. All right, uh, community members, any questions for Honolulu Fire Department? All right, nothing heard. Thank you, folks, for, uh-
Thank you for having me.
Yeah, and thank you for, uh, doing the job that you guys do. Really appreciate it. Okay, uh, Honolulu Police Department?
Yeah, hi, Lieutenant Uwasaki with District Three Pro City. Um, I have the reported incident report from January twenty-five to, or sorry, January twenty-twenty-five to February twenty-twenty-five. So motor vehicle deaths was at ten, went down to eight. Burglaries was at four, went up to eight. Uh, thefts was thirty-one in January, um, reduced to fourteen in February, and car break-ins was ten in January twenty-twenty-five, reduced to seven in February twenty-twenty-five. Calls for service in this area, uh, in January twenty-twenty-five, one thousand three hundred forty-two. In February, one thousand two hundred sixty-eight. And total calls for District Three, which we, uh, cover from by Aloha Stadium, Salt Lake, all the way to Kuniya, was five thousand one hundred ninety-one calls, and in February was four thousand nine hundred sixty-six calls for service. And the safety tip of the month is do not leave your valuables in your car. It is not a storage unit, it's a target for these criminals. And that's all I have for the reported incidents. There's any questions?
Uh, board members, before I ask, Lawrence?
I had a question. I seen, um, a naked, houseless individual walking by Straub Center by Pearl Ridge. If I call it in, is that a non-emergency call?
Well, well, it could be, uh, both an emergency or a non-emergency, because I know who the individual you're talking about. Um, and she's been around District Three for a, a while now. I've been here six years, and she's been around the entire time. Um, at times, uh, I know she does walk onto the roadway, or she, she sits in the middle of the roadway with her feet sticking out on the roadway, so, yeah, please do call. Um, it can be an emergency call because, you know, um, it's, uh, dangerous for, you know, herself as well as the motorists, so, yeah, I would call it in as an emergency and then have us respond immediately.
Okay, so when I call nine-one-one, say I call as non-emergency, would the nine-one-one operator put it on some kind of, um, I guess, criteria as far as the urgency?
Yeah, they do, um, but, uh, normally, uh, we have, uh, well, usually we have, you know, thirteen to seventeen officers working at a time, so they'll dispatch it, yeah. I, I don't see, uh, too much of a, you know, a delay at, you know, recently with calls for service. So they'll dispatch it, and the officer will go and respond to it. Yeah, but yeah, i- if you're asking about, uh, um, if there is, uh, you know, order that they do it, um, yeah, like, active fights and stuff like that will go, or, um, you know, abuse incidents domestic and stuff will go before that, but, uh, yeah, um, I don't see a, a lag recently, so it'll get dispatched.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so, uh, I got a question for you. Um, where, where are you at with apprehension of the juveniles that attacked the other juvenile at Pearl Ridge Shopping Center?
Yeah, you know, Pearl Ridge has been a problem, um, with shoplifting, robberies, um, they've been, uh, assaulting elderly individuals and taking their property, so we've been working on that a lot. Um, our, we have a crime reduction unit who's in plainclothes, so they've been working the mall as well, um, and being active. We know who the, the participants are, so, um, yeah, our, our, uh, district is really, uh, on them right now, so, yeah.
Okay, well, could you report back at next month about where that status is in terms of those individuals? Because they're, I mean, they're caught on camera, right? I mean, you should be able to identify them. And you also caught one already out of the five, I think, that was, uh, participated in that. So, uh, yeah, if you could please report back to us the status of that next month, I would appreciate that. Now, it begs another question, though. Um, are you guys staffed correctly to support the coverage of the area that you just mentioned, from Kuniya all the way to Salt Lake? Because that seems like a very large area to, to run out of the Pearl City Station.
Yeah, you know, um, we, so we do have seventeen beats. So, um, Waipahu, uh, including Waipio, and, um, there's also Coral Ridge that's coming up newly. So I believe they're doing a restructuring of beats and stuff like that, but, yeah, so we have six, uh, positions in Waipahu, Waikale, um, Kuniya, and Waipio. Uh, we have six positions for, just, um, from like where the police stations at, um, up to Pearl Ridge, and then Pearl Ridge up to IAA, going up IAA Heights, Salt Lake, um, is, uh, five officers, so. And normally, um, like, recruiting is our main goal right now. Uh, we're always short, we're always working short, so, um, at, at, at one time, usually it's, I would say thirteen to fourteen officers, um, on the road at a time, so there is, um, times where all, you know, thirteen officers are available to patrol, to traffic enforcement, to proactive patrolling, but there are times when the, like, you know, um, the caseload's high, and they're going case to case, so.
So is, is Pearl City, uh, in terms of your staffing, are you currently short? Do you have open positions, is kind of what I'm asking?
Yeah, I believe, uh, um, department-wide, it's like that, it's, it's short everywhere, so that's why our chief really promotes recruiting, recruiting, recruiting. That's his main goal right now, is to get recruitment to, um, cover these, these shortages that we do have. But as far as, um-
Yeah, yeah, as far as Pearl City, though, like, how should our-
Yeah, so I'm the watch commander. Um, at, so there's these that we have full coverage, there's these that we have fifteen. So I said seventeen is the, the full coverage that we have, so, yeah, there's times that we have full coverage. Um, I do think it's, uh, more officers would always help. But as far as caseload, and I'm the watch commander at night, I supervise from six at night till seven-thirty in the morning. Um, we, we do, uh, I mean, we have bars and nightclubs that, that have very large fights at times that, that will take up all of our officers. Also, the, like, we have fatalities, unfortunate fatalities on the freeway, so there's certain cases. Um, we have shootings, stabbings, and stuff that'll take up the officers, but, um, for a normal, um, I don't want to say normal, but for, um, most of the days, we are, we are properly staffed, I would say.
Okay, okay.
To protect the citizens in Pearl City.
Yeah, so, so for me, I don't understand, and I'm just ignorant to it honestly, is that, uh, like, when you say sixteen beats, how's that correlate with some of the other stations? Is that, is that relatively equal to that, or is it, are, are you, you know, is that less than some of the other stations? Or, like, for example, like, Y and I, right? Like, how many, how many beats do they have up there? I do not know, you know? Um, so how you guys correlate with some of the other stations? Is it equalized, or is it less, or, I, I, yeah, you kind of where I'm going with that?
Yeah, yeah, um, no, I think it's, uh, properly staffed, the beats are, um, properly structured, um, but like I said, if we could, uh, have a fully staffed every day, that would be great, you know, that would be the best situation, but, yeah, as far as the structuring of the beats and stuff, I know they're, um, restructuring some of them, and they might include, like, Waipahu with, with District Eight, Kapole, which extends out to Y and I, and they might make a District Nine and stuff. So there's always talks and ideas going on, but as far as beat-wise and, uh, you know, how the Pearl City's structured, I, I think it's, uh, structured well, and, and every, uh, every area in Pearl City, like I said, from Kuniya to IAA is covered.
Okay.
And I think it's properly covered, yeah.
Yeah, the reason why I'm, I'm kind of going down this line of questioning is that the mayor's having a town hall coming up, and, uh, if this is something that needs to be, uh, addressed, right, or presented to him, I'd like to be able to do that, so.
Yeah, so, yeah, for, to answer your question, I think it's properly structured. Um, but the chief would say the same thing, that we, we want recruitment, we want more officers.
All right, cool. Okay, thank you. All right, uh, community members, any questions for HPD? Okay, nothing heard. Thank you, sir, for your time. Appreciate it, and thank you for answering.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, can we now move on to the community concerns or, Curtis? Okay, great, thank you. All right, uh, community concerns. So ma'am, I guess you had something you wanted to say?
And anything regarding Catholic charity should be addressed, Agenda Item Five, C.
Okay.
Because it does state that comments and concerns not listed on the agenda can be shared at this time. That's the recommendation.
Right, so they can share the Catholic charity, if they have an opinion about Catholic charities, they share it here, or do they defer it until later? After. Okay, so ma'am, if you're, if you're talking about that, you're gonna defer to later. Okay, great, okay. So, so how, so let's talk about that real quick. Um, so when we get to the vote section, or we get to the agenda item, you, as a board, will have an opportunity to ask not only them, but Catholic charities' questions as we do that discussion period, right? Uh, that's not gonna happen tonight.
Can you use the mic, please?
Well, they should be able to use under the community concerns portion of the agenda, and they should be free to testify on any matter before the board for these three minutes.
At, at the proper agenda item.
Nobody's, the chair will not allow them to testify under that item unless we ask them a specific question.
Public, public testimony can be accepted on any agenda item.
Okay, so you're, okay.
So, so that's the recommendation.
You that public testimony-
Is allowed.
Has to be allowed.
Yes.
Okay. So we're clear, Russell? Okay, all right, okay, uh, all right, so any other community concerns? Okay, nothing heard. All right, let's move on. Board of Water Supply. Tracy, can we make it quick? Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, good evening, Chair Wood, members of the IAA Neighborhood Board, members of the IAA Community. I'm Tracy with the Board of Water Supply, and I will make my report briefly. Uh, I just wanted to report that there were four main breaks in this neighborhood board district last month. Um, February first, we saw two main breaks, one on Aka Aka Street, one on Ka'amilo Street. February fourth, we saw two main breaks again, one on Lauole Street and the other on IAA Heights Drive. Board of Water Supply, um, wants to announce that we are hiring. Um, so if you're thirsty for a stable career, the Board of Water Supply is hiring. We have open positions in engineering, information technology, customer care, and administrative roles. You can enjoy great benefits, job security, and the opportunity to grow professionally and personally, and also make a difference. So it's time to turn the valve on a new career that matters. Um, if you're interested, apply today at www dot board of watersupply dot com slash jobs, or call eight oh eight seven four eight five one six zero. That's it.
I thoroughly appreciated that, Tracy. Thank you, Tracy, so much. Board members, any questions for Board of Water? Uh, Francie? Uh, it's just, here, hand me that one.
Thank you, Tracy. Um, the water main break on Aka Aka, the, when they repaved, it's very, like, very bumpy.
I, I heard that report, and, um, actually, because, um, my best friend from high school lives on that street. So she called me, and, um, I did contact our, um, the division that handles, um, fixing those bump, uh, bumpy roads, and they said that they'll try to get on it as soon as possible. So please know that we are aware of that and that we are in the process of addressing that.
There's also the one, um, just before the speed hump on Maimea Highway after Seven-Eleven and Boston's Pizza.
Okay.
Oh, that's the new, right before the speed bump. That one's been there a while, though.
Okay.
Um, I just stay out of the right lane when I go over that speed bump, so.
Okay, well, let me take those concerns back. Um, I know that it takes a while to do permanent patching, but meantime, Board of Water Supply tries to be responsive to community concerns, especially regarding, um, uneven trench patches, so, um, we'll follow up. Thank you. You're welcome.
Okay, uh, community, or board members, any other questions for Board of Water Supply? Uh, community members, any questions for Board of Water Supply? Nothing heard. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your kind attention tonight.
Okay, Hawaiian Electric. Not on? I'm gonna drag those guys in here at some point. Okay, Stadium Authority. Usually online.
Aloha, Chair Wood, members of the board and members of- Yes, hi.
You're in Rome. I had no idea. Wow.
I'm back. Um, but very quickly, we just wanted to mahalo the community again for your active engagement and the February community outreach. We are taking all of that information along with Aloha Halava District partners, and working very hard on our due diligence and negotiations into our contract phase. I did also want to share that in this legislative session, there are four bills that are really more pertinent to the new Aloha Stadium Entertainment District. The most active one that we're watching is House Bill fourteen ninety-four relating to sports facilities. And that's the bill that's proposing to basically lapse the two hundred and fifty million dollars that we already have, pretty much abandoning all the work that we've done, and then going ahead and making a new appropriation to the University of Hawaii for a stadium purely at that site. It would then disband the stadium authority and then create a new Halava District, um, authority to determine what kind of development should happen. Obviously, our team is opposed to that bill. If the community would actively like to participate, the next hearing is scheduled for March thirteenth in two days, uh, three o'clock in the afternoon. Um, that's all I have for Nason, and then I'll go ahead and launch to Sam for latest activities.
All right, hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you, Chair, thank you, board. Quick update, so we did, um, wrap up our forty-first Great Aloha Run this past February seventeenth, as well as our Girl Scout Cookie Pickup on February twentieth. So now our main focus will be actually working on the Upper Halavalot, um, to start construction work on that so that we can relocate the swap meet vendors. Um, I believe I told you last month that it was June that we will be relocating. Um, based on the construction schedule, we are actually looking to have a soft opening on July second now. So that is what we are tentatively working on, and then we will have a grand opening planned for August. Um, upcoming this month, I'm happy to share that we have partnered with the Hawaii Food Bank again this year, so we have some really fun things we're doing. We're doing a collection drive, um, every Sunday, starting this Sunday, March sixteenth, the twenty-third, and the thirtieth. Um, so when you make a donation, whether it's a monetary donation or a canned good donation, we do have vendors that have little, um, giveaways as our way of thanking everyone for their donation. And then on Sunday, March thirtieth, um, along with the donation drive, we're doing a rummage sale. Uh, so we'll have two booths that we'll be setting up, uh, we'll have our food bank, uh, T-shirts that they provided for us, as well as all kind of fun activities going on, entertainment, um, all in support for the Hawaii Food Bank. And that wraps me up, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, board members, any, any questions for Statement Authority? Lawrence?
Yeah, um, you know, there was an article in, um, Civil Beat, I believe, on February twenty-eighth, and the developer mentioned that as far as, uh, stadium, it's like a black hole, because basically it's gonna cost twice as much to develop the stadium just to do utilities and infrastructure, looking roughly about hundred eighty million dollars. So if you look at the cost that was allocated, which was three hundred fifty million, I believe, you're already starting behind two hundred, roughly two hundred million behind. That's why, um, as far as getting additional monies, you know, if you cannot get additional monies, the project's basically dead at the Halava site, because you can't do anything with a hundred fifty million after you spend all that money to do the utilities and infrastructure. Um, how you guys planning on getting that additional monies?
So there are a lot of motions in play at this time, yeah, and we acknowledge the infrastructure is a huge cost that we have to look at, the developers considering. We're working with both the state and the county to look at supplemental infrastructure, potential funding coming in, because that infrastructure would serve the entire community, especially, uh, the city and county of Honolulu. And the developers looking at different types of community, um, is it community finance funds through the county, and we're looking at also, um, types of grants that we could apply for. So we're working both the state and the development team, and working with the county as well, to look for ways to bring in additional funding. We're looking at grants from the Navy next door, they're also supporting our efforts to build as much as we can. So that's a lot of the due diligence that's happening right now, and, uh, certainly a lot of work to go through, and a lot to see what we can build for the three hundred fifty million dollars. So not dead in the water yet, but a lot of work to come.
So if you guys are trying to cut a contract in the next three months, four months or so, aren't we kind of like way behind if you're trying to find and dig for money now? We should have been doing all that.
We have been doing that all this time, and so that's how we know that there are different avenues to pursue. We've been working with the city and county and the federal government for alternatives, working also with the legislature and different administrative offices to see what alternatives are. So the agreements I'm working on includes a stadium development and operating agreement, and then financial closing to come afterwards. So, yeah, a lot of work going on. I wouldn't say it's dead in the water, but that's the challenge we knew we started with, and continue to just search for, um, that support.
Okay, this is an option, because I was looking at all the pros and cons for the different sites around the island.
Yes.
Would you guys, uh, consider developing the stadium at Waipahu High School and throwing in a hundred fifty million in there? It's right next to the rail route, it's centrally located, so it would vastly improve the community in that area. And I'm sure with hundred fifty, two hundred mil, if you threw it all in that existing stadium complex, you probably could make a nice facility in that location.
So I think, you know, that's a different alternative. We, we have to look at the infrastructure there. Honestly, to look at that, you're probably ten years out, because you're starting from scratch again, investigating a new site, and going through environmental impact statements, and testing the infrastructure, you know, the, what I know Waipahu High School is, the access is not as, uh, beneficial as where we are right now in Halava. So that would be a plan that we would look at if this plan fails, because we would be about ten years out if we shift locations now.
Okay, as far as the ten years out, I, I would think it'd be a lot faster to do than ten years, but, um, yeah, that's all I could say. Thank you.
No worries. I have it on the list. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, board members, for Stadium Authority? All right, community members, any questions for Stadium Authority? Okay, nothing heard. All right, thank you both for your, uh, time. Okay, uh, O triple C.
Good evening, Wood Chair, Chair, Chair Wood.
Good evening.
Members of the board, members of the community, I am Bettina Maynard from AHL. I am here on behalf of the O triple C Design Team. I am joined by DCR's Deputy Director for Administration, Melanie Martin, and, uh, DCR's Business Management Officer, uh, Tessie Fernandez. They are both online. Um, I am giving a brief update assisted by Chris Gadasch, uh, from our firm, who ensures I don't have any technical challenges, and he will, um, give the legislative update, um, in a second. You should have received our latest newsletter, um, but we are, this is almost old news, because within about a week, you should receive, um, newsletter number fifty-eight, so please look forward to that. Um, in January, the O triple C Design Team attended, presented, and exhibited at the two thousand, well, well, two thousand twenty-five American Correctional Association, uh, Winter Conference. Um, members of DCR, Dags, and the design team presented a seminar and managed a booth on the, uh, exhibit floor. Uh, this conference is a great opportunity, um, and was a success, as many of the interested parties that, um, we are reaching out to are curious and expect updates on the, uh, project. Um, unexpected was, next slide, unexpected, um, and wonderful at the same time was that our new Oahu jail is one of the top six projects to watch in twenty twenty-five. And, um, here on this map, you see it is listed, um, first. And, um, now I'm gonna hand this over to Chris Gadasch, who deserves all the credit for the research and update on the legislative bills that impact our project. Chris? You are on mute.
Can you hear me now?
Yep, perfect.
Thank you, Bettina. Um, due to the time limitations, I'm not gonna go through all of these, I'm gonna kind of skip over the ones where no action was taken. Um, in regards to the schedule, last week was the first crossover, so we're excited to see these bills moving forward. Uh, first up is House Bill ten oh two, and this is in regards to extending the term of the Oversight Coordinator for the Hawaii Correctional System Oversight Commission. Both the bills are moving forward, and the next hearing is regarding the House Bill, and that's tomorrow at three P M. Next up is House Bill one twenty-eight, and that establishes factors under which officers may without warrant arrest and detain persons for petty misdemeanors and violations. This is moving forward, um, with a hearing tomorrow at three P M.
Before I can help with that, I need to know who's speaking. Open the Home App on your iPhone.
House Bill one twenty-seven.
Name, and enable recognize my voice.
This will, for House Bill one twenty-seven, this will set bail to me in a amount that the defendant can afford. This is moving forward with the next hearing being, um, in two days on Thursday at nine forty-five. Hopefully, there's no action taken. House Bill six seven seven, this is to assist inmates in retaining inmate's civil identification cards, birth certificate, social security cards when they're released, before they're released, sorry. This is moving forward with the next hearing being tomorrow at ten A M. Um, House Bill four thirty-three, this is to connect offenders with community-based services upon release. This is moving forward with the next hearing being tomorrow at three P M. House Bill thirteen twenty-two, this restricts the use of solitary confinement. This is moving forward with the next hearing tomorrow at ten A M. House Bill one thirty-two, this is, um, regarding the expungement process of arrest records concerning promoting- concerning promoting the detrimental drug in the third degree. This is moving forward with a hearing, or this was passed with the latest hearing yesterday. House Bill. Here we are. So then up now is some of the concurrent resolutions. In brief, these include to include a circuit and circuit court and district court facilities and establish pre-release procedures which, under detainees or inmates upon release, are transported to a site other than residential communities or public spaces. This is moving forward. HCR sixty three makes available to correctional facilities, staff members, clinical counseling services, other than the existing mental health resources available to inmates. This is also moving forward. HCR one fifty three, this is to systematically reduce the number of inmates incarcerated in private out-of-state corrections facilities. And then how HCR one fifty four, this is the audit of the Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation in regard to spending on the planning for the new O triple C center. And then SCR twenty, this comprehensively reevaluates DCR's policies regarding in-person contact visitation at correctional facilities. And that is the update for legislation at this time. Back to Bettina.
Great, thank you very much, Chris. I apologize for my Apple device jumping in and wanting to help and not understanding. So yeah, that was unplanned. Here is a reminder of our timeline, the major milestones and where we currently are. That is that dotted red area. As we're moving forward, this project needs continued broad support from the administration, the legislature themselves and the community. You might notice that the two hundred and fifty million initial construction funding request has been deferred to the two thousand twenty seven legislative session. The governor has determined that the Maui Fire Recovery and Creating Affordable Housing are superseding priorities for this current legislature. I'd like to emphasize that project completion date remains unchanged. This can be achieved by fast-tracking the P three teams' drawings as well as the permitting process. Next slide is the link to our new Oahu jail website. And on the main page, if you scroll down a little bit, you'll find a new video on the current status of the facility. That video was shown at the ACA conference and it includes the governor sharing his support for the new jail. And that concludes our presentation. Any questions?
Okay, any questions for O triple C, Lawrence?
Just one, what is the budget now for O triple C?
We are going through the program verification process. The last budget is, was a little bit over, I should notice exactly, I want to say it was nine hundred and forty seven million dollars.
But that's concurrent, that's concurrent dollars or is that when you guys actually start your construction?
That is in current dollars.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for O triple C? All right, community members, any questions? Okay, nothing heard. All right, thank you. Thank you, Bettina.
Of course, thank you.
All right, moving on, Pearl Ridge Shopping Center.
Chair Wood, members of board. Good news on Planet Fitness, just heard this morning that Planet Fitness will be taking possession of their space in about thirty to forty-five days and will start construction. Once they start, once they have possession of the space, I'll get a little bit more information on their completion date.
Do they get the permit? They got the permit? Yes, okay, awesome, great.
Well, they got the S I I, S A I.
Okay, great, thank you.
Movement Plus Physical Therapy opened in the former Oahu Spine location and they opened on February fourteenth. Just a couple of quick event highlights. If you like country music, we now have a, have a country music night every Thursday at eight thirty P M. Grab your cowboy hat, your boots and come out, work on your two-step. So that's at eight thirty P M at our Valor Bar, which is located in a food court at, at By Makai. Also at Valor, Pepena will be performing on Friday, March fourteenth at nine P M. The Moana Lua Middle School Orchestra will be performing at our Marco Center Court on Tuesday, March twenty-fifth, between five and five forty-five P M. And finally, just to note, the Aloha Island Craft Fair is March fifteenth through March seventeenth. This includes or pretty much involves local artisans, entrepreneurs that make a lot of island type of goods. That's my report. Please, please visit proridgeonline.com for any other updates. And I'll take any questions.
All right, board members, any questions for Pearl Ridge? Hey, community members, any questions for Pearl Ridge? Okay, nothing heard. Thank you. All right, as we quickly move along, let's get to U S Navy and DOD. Okay, Lydia's on, okay.
Hi, yeah, this is Lydia. Sorry, I'm not joining you tonight, but I am a little bit under the weather, so didn't want to be there in person. I'll just kick it off with a few items. We sent our report earlier. I think Vic forwarded it with our weekly molelo and some flyers that Joanna from Red Hill will, will touch base on. Just want to remind everybody about opportunities to visit with our Navy. We do tours on several Saturdays a month and those dates change every month. It's not a regular second or third Saturday. It's in the morning. But if you have groups who are interested, please don't hesitate to reach out to me directly or via Chair Wood. And then same with community white boats, just a good opportunity to have discussions on current issues and opportunities. And then lastly, our Lo Lima Navy, in honor of the Navy's two hundred fiftieth birthday and deep respect for the ability and the opportunity to live here, we are continuing to log volunteer activities and look for opportunities that the community has where our people can go participate. We're doing bike path cleanup, hiking trail cleanup and invasive species removal, blood donation and more. So thank you for the opportunity and I will turn it over to Joanna, who I think then will give it to Vic. Standing by for any questions after that.
Good evening, Chair Wood, board members and community members. My name is Joanna Dolphin. I'm from the Navy Closure Task Force Red Hill. I know you're used to seeing Steph Abdul do presentations, but she's going on maternity leave starting on Monday. So I'll be stepping in for her in the time being. So just a few updates from Navy Closure Task Force. The first is we sent out public notification yesterday regarding de-gassing of Tank Three at Red Hill, which is scheduled to start this week. Once de-gassing commences, we will be providing daily air quality monitoring updates on our mobile app as well as daily updates on our website. So you can visit navyclosuretaskforce.com or download the mobile app in the Apple Store or Google Play to get that information. Second thing I have is pressure washing of Tanks Seven and Eight have been completed. They in, they are in the process of being inspected by the regulators to certify them as clean. Our open house, our next open house is actually scheduled for tomorrow, March twelfth, at Kehe Lagoon in the Los Spanios Room. There are a few flyers here on the table for those who are interested. You can also find that information on the mobile app and on the website. We encourage everyone to come out if you've never been to one before. This open house will be focused on the accomplishments of the Navy Closure Task Force in the last year, so focusing on operations, you know, tank cleaning and all of the environmental efforts that are going on. And then the last thing, of course, I said it already, but if you don't have the mobile app on your phone, please do so to keep up to date with all of the things going on at Red Hill. I'll pass it to Vic.
Thanks, Joanna.
Hello, board. Victor Flint, NAFAC Hawaii. First, dry dock five update, everything moving forward? The big shoring wall pile driving stuff is pow. And this thing was huge, eighty-five inch circular, two hundred foot deep piling. So all that is pow. The dredging of the dry dock is pow. And so right now, we're just finishing up on the nine floor units. And all this is being done on Waipio Peninsula. So when all the components are done, they'll be barged over from Waipio Peninsula to the shipyard. This way, it takes the construction traffic off the Navy roads. Next, the next is the Pearl Harbor Restoration Advisory Board. Next meeting is April sixteenth at the Oahu Veterans Center in Foster Village. And the last thing I have is an announcement. After fifty years of government service, folks, I'm retiring. Thank you for allowing me. Thank you, mahalo. Thank you. I thank you all for, for being volunteers and serving your community. And thank you for allowing me to take part in that journey with you. So with that, I say aloha and ahuiho kako. Thank you.
Aloha. So two questions. So Uncle, did you, did you take up the offer or are you actually retiring? Are you on deferred until that time?
I took the fork in the road.
You took the fork in the road, okay. All right, I get it. All right, thank you. Well, thank you for your service. Appreciate it. Okay, so, okay, with that, Lawrence, question?
Vic, other question? In as far as the dredge material, where is that being disposed of?
Dredge material stays on Fort Island until it's dry and then it's, it's taken to a landfill. Once it's dry and any organic material is either removed or any solid material. Because we pick up stuff all the time, going back to World War Two stuff. We don't want that to be in any landfill, but it stays out on Waipio Peninsula until it's dry and treated.
Is it tested for contamination at the Waipio Peninsula?
Yep.
Okay, so if it's contaminated, is the procedure different as far as disposal?
Yeah, contaminated material is treated like it has mat waste and it's done in, with all the rules regarding what we're, we follow with from the Board of Health and EPA. Has to be inspected and approved before it goes out.
So it's, it's disposed of locally or is it shipped to the mainland?
That one, I don't have the answer. I know that the approved clean material that's been dried out and inspected and tested is done locally. The hazmat, I don't know exactly where it goes, but it gets shipped out.
Thank you.
Yep. So Lawrence, we periodically ask updates for that dry dock project that's going on down there. The next, and Lydia, the next update, when we do call them in, is that something that they could provide us is, you know, maybe a brief, like a, just one slide about, about the environmental concerns that Mr. Heega has in regards to that, that dredging material?
Yeah, I took notes on that, so I'll put that as a do-out and provide to them and ask them for the next up. Do you have them on periodic or do you want me to reach out to them to schedule for their next brief?
I think, I think we just had them in here recently, right? So, so I think probably we'll take a look at maybe having them back sometime later this year. So, but I'll give you a heads up prior to, to that, at least a couple of months prior to putting them on the agenda.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Steve, I could give you Steve Patti's contact info.
Yeah, would you please?
So, yeah, you don't have to wait till the end of the month or whatever. If you got a hot issue, give them a call.
Okay, yeah, give me that information and then I can, you know, Lawrence, you can, you know, you, through me or both of us, we can reach out to him and find out if we can get that information. Yeah, okay, thank you, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions for DOD? Okay, Lawrence, go ahead.
I asked a question the other, at the other meeting about bringing that Halava well back online. I'm not sure if you have a representative that's going to discuss that. But my concern was because we have contamination, I guess, in the Halava area. If the Department of Defense can bring the Halava well back online successfully, if another well that's serving our domestic water should be contaminated, at least we know what kind of timeline it'll take for the state to bring that well back online following the DOD's procedures and protocols. You guys have any, I guess, response as far as how long it'll take to get that Halava well back online?
Just for clarification, is that, are you referring to the Navy AIA Halava well or the AIA Halava well that belongs to Board of Water Supply?
No, it's a Navy well that was shut down that serves Navy facilities.
Okay, yeah, so that well right now, there, there is a GAC system in place, the granulate, granular activated carbon filtration system that, that is online right now. We need to work with the regulator to, for their permission to restart the well. And we're hoping to get a permission from them later this summer.
Okay, so the question that I posed at past meeting, if you guys get the green light from Department of Health, how long after you get the green light will that well be brought back online?
So I would have to, we'd have to get back to you on that, exactly how long it would take after we get that permission from Department of Health.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you for your time. Okay, moving on, Mayor's rep?
Good evening, Chair Wood and members of the board, members of the community. I'm Haakum Mills, Director Design and Construction. I'll try to keep this short. A couple of quick announcements from this month's newsletter. The city's Waipana Art Initiative makes its debut, celebrating Oahu's cultural and historical sites. Kumua Ola Ho, a traditional transitional housing shelter for homeless individuals opens at Ebylae Center. Mayor Blangiardi introduces Roy Miyahira. Miyahira, the city's new Director of Homeless Solutions. An important update for Oahu residents on FEMA's updated flood insurance rate maps. And Honolulu gets designated a bicycle-friendly community and what we're doing to improve. That's on the March twenty twenty five edition of the, of the newsletter, the link I put in the chat. Couple of issues. There was a question about the community policing team and the establishment of volunteer citizens who would collect video and audio and evidence and be able to present that to HPD. And there was a question, could you clarify whether HPD has the manpower to evaluate video-based offenses? Additionally, is this approach constitutional? HPD responded, Honolulu Police Department relies on its relationships with the public to be successful. However, the idea of gathering information via video and audio recordings and presenting them to officers to issue a citation would not be possible. Officers cite for on-view violations and are required to appear in court to testify in the event the citation is contested. Impartially, partiality is also a concern with this suggestion. Video and audio on its own would not meet the constitutional requirements of the law in court. Best solution is to use online options for reporting non-emergency violations. An example would be the Honolulu three-one-one program in which photos can be uploaded. There was a question about the sidewalk condition and closure status. This was at nine-nine dash two-three-six Moana Lua Road, next I A A Shopping Center. DPP could provide an update about the sidewalk condition and the status of the closure. DPP replied that the correct address with the permit is nine-nine dash two-three-zero Moana Lua Road. Site investigation on March third, twenty twenty five by Department of Planning and Permitting Building Inspection Section revealed ongoing construction at the above- referenced property. Part of the existing sidewalk fronting Moana Lua Road was demolished for the installation of various utility lines for the proposed three-story commercial building. Trenching permit was acquired and active for the job under TP two-zero-two-four dash zero-nine dash zero-seven-six-nine. The sidewalk is still accessible to pedestrians and was not closed at the time of inspection. No building violation is noted at this time. Please refer, oh, no, and that's it. That is my report and happy to take any questions.
Okay, thank you. Board members, any questions for the mayor's rep? Hey, community members, any questions? Hey, community members, any questions? Okay, nothing heard. All right, let's move on. Okay, thank you. All right, so Councilmember Cordero's office?
Good evening, board, community members, and chair. I'm Linda, Councilmember Cordero's representative this evening. She apologizes for not being here in person. And we have provided a written report for you all. For those online, it's accessible online as well as extra copies in the back on the table. So this month, council begins its fiscal year twenty-twenty-six budget process. And this week, the Budget Committee is holding their informational briefings. A schedule of the budget meetings are on the first page along with calendar of events as well as if you are interested in watching the meetings or re-watching them, the meetings are broadcast online at youtube.com forward slash at Honolulu City Council. You can also find more information on the budget process, access the budget documents, as well as download the budget calendar at HonoluluCityCouncil.org forward slash budgetfy26. Next, Councilmember Cordero wanted me to highlight the information on the dates, times, and locations of the, for the Department of Environmental Services Town Halls for the proposed sewer fee increases, which can be found on page two. The next Town Hall after tonight's one will be on Thursday, March thirteenth, from five-thirty to seven-thirty in the evening at Salt Lake District Park. So in jumping ahead to the last page, there is a free hiring event this Saturday, March fifteenth, from ten to three at Blaisdell Exhibition Hall. For the community updates, the Department of Facility Maintenance has informed our office that their mid-block pedestrian crossing signs on Ulenish Street near Aea High School is expected to be replaced by mid-March. Additionally, DFM has issued a work order to replace the faded no-U-turn signs on Salt Lake Boulevard at Kalailoa Street, as well as we had requested for a yield-on-green sign for no, for the left turns on Salt Lake Boulevard onto Kalailoa Street from, which has been referred to the Department of Transportation Services for further review. Other information included in this report are couple of community highlights as well as legislative updates on bills that are going, that are moving through the council. And that concludes my report, and I thank you all for your time. And I'm available to take back any questions.
Board members, any questions? Lawrence?
I'm not sure if this relates to what Councilmember Cordero is doing. Hospital one-zero-zero-one regarding that eight-hundred-seven-million payment for the Maui wildfire. Is there any way that we could make that as a loan to Honey Electric? Because there's a lot of need for monies out there. The stadium, there's a three-hundred-million-dollar change order for rail. There's a forty-million-dollar fix for the New State Hospital. There's Maui schools, there's Maui infrastructure. Is there any way to turn that into a loan?
So Lawrence, that's more state fund, not city. Okay, but is that, those are all state level? Okay, 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 okay. So moving on, any other board members, any questions? Can we go talk about this sewer fee increase again? Because it's one of my favorite subjects. Where does Councilmember Cordero stand on this particular program?
I do not get her opinion on this, I can't speak on that matter.
I'm online, Linda.
Oh, she's online.
Oh, okay. Councilmember Cordero?
Hi, Chair Wood and Neighborhood Board Members and Community. Thank you very much for being present. First off, the sewer rate discussion is a difficult topic. We face looking at nine percent increases every year to equate to one-hundred percent increases for our neighbors. That is, if they don't get any support, whether it be through lower-income support from our city agencies. But if we do take it down the line, on the other hand, it will be further or higher increases per year. The closer we get to, I believe, twenty-twenty-seven or twenty-twenty-eight, I'm not sure, at this moment. We have had multiple discussions to see if we can get the rate down. We are now doing our budget departmental briefings today and for the rest of this week. And we are looking for any which types of funds, from any general funds that we can then filter to our sewer fund, which would then be able to help subsidize and lower the increase for the residents. So we are looking for different ways to fund that sewer fund so that it doesn't have to be a nine percent increase every year to equate to one-hundred percent. So my position is to look for, if it's not federal grants or federal funding to support us, to find any extra cash on hand at the city that we can, maybe giving up some certain projects that we want to be able to decrease that weight on our neighbors. And that's my sense.
So, are you for or against this?
I believe, oh, I'm for finding the money so that we lower the percentage increase. But I think that if we don't push it out now, it's gonna be a higher increase after this year.
Okay, okay, thank you. And then I know that we've had these individuals come and present in front of our board. And I think they've been coy, to say the least, about how, because currently, right now, the Board of Water Supply absorbs this, right, into their fee structure, correct?
No, you mean on the bill that's presented? It does show up on their bill, but the Board of Water Supply does not absorb it. It's a separate Environmental Services sewer fee.
Right, okay. So, so when this is stood up, the question I've been asking, and I don't think I've ever gotten a clear response, is, is will the water bill go down when this particular department is stood up?
I don't believe that is, they are not related. So our sewer fee is through a federal consent decree project. We have certain limitations, certain expectations from the federal government that we have not acted on. And with that, we are where we are now, at this high increase.
Okay, so, so we can expect basically another fee on top of, and we don't expect any kind of reduction on the Board of Water Supply, the bill that we get every month as homeowners or as condo owners or renters, correct?
So rate peers will pay for their water usage to the Board of Water Supply. And we pay for our sewer fee to the Environmental Services, but it shows up on the same bill.
Right, okay.
But they're separate.
I think one of the frustrations that we have is that we consider the storm drain to be part of the city and county's basic services. And to hit us with an additional fee, something which should be basic for what we already pay in taxes, it just doesn't make any sense. Now, we have money for a pedestrian bridge over the Alawai. We have money to give so-called hazard pay to office workers. I know it's part of the negotiation in their contract, but somehow we're able to find millions of dollars for those projects. But we want to hit up our homeowners for an additional fee for storm drains. And it just doesn't make good sense to me.
Chair Wood, if I may, please?
Yeah, you can step into this as much as you want, Haku.
Not that I want to step into it. I just, I don't want Councilmember Cordero to be kind of taking the front for the administration, for the city as a whole. I think if the board has additional questions about the sewer fees, then, you know, that's something that we can discuss with them about coming back and being able to provide an update or have further discussion. The discussion about the stormwater utility that has been kind of, has been brought up over the years to cover, you know, the necessary cost of maintenance and upgrades to the storm drainage system is another, is a separate issue. So I just kind of want to leave it at this, that, you know, the BWS fee, as Councilmember Cordero mentioned, that's completely separate and unrelated. BWS is working to try to separate themselves so that there are different fees paid, one to Environmental Services and then one to BWS. I don't know when that is likely to happen. So, at least as I understand, the foreseeable future will be one bill paid to both E&amp;V and to BWS. The stormwater utility is a different issue that is driven right now by the Department of Facilities Maintenance, but incorporates many other agencies, including my department, Department of Design and Construction, who would be utilizing these additional funds to make upgrades that are absolutely necessary, as many of you note, for flooding across the whole island because of infrastructure that has either not been able to be maintained or hasn't been upgraded or wasn't installed to begin with. And so, I just, I just want the board to not get too much into conversation right now when the necessary parties aren't available here to provide you with the information. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, hey Curtis, can we reach out to these folks and have them come back again? I think this will be now the third time that we've asked them to show up, right? Okay.
Right, also in two days, like Linda said, five-thirty, Salt Lake District Park, the Town Hall regarding the proposed sewer fee increases. That would be the closest one in the neighborhood.
Yeah, now, I will not be represented there. I'll be on a flight to the mainland. So, if any one of you folks want to attend, please do so.
But we can, we can request as.
Well, I'd like to, yeah, what I would like to do is request and actually ask them what they gathered based on those Town Halls and have them report that to us, the consensus of what they determined the residents feel about this. Because I have a feeling that residents are not going to be too happy about this. Okay, okay, let's go ahead. Okay, Councilmember Cordero, thank you so much for your time. Appreciate it. And thank you as well, too, by the way. Okay, moving on, Councilmember Okamoto's office?
Aloha, Chair and Board Members. This is Poa from Councilmember Okamoto's office. I'm happy to see everybody here and here safe. Councilmember Okamoto apologized that she couldn't attend the meeting in person. And I apologize that I could not attend the meeting in person. I just got out of one of my master classes at Yoichano. So I just wanted to give you some highlights, the council announcements for this month. The Honolulu City County Council held its latest full council meeting on Wednesday, February twenty-six, twenty-twenty-five, which included council-approved Mayor Blangiardi's appointments, including managing director Mike Formby. During the week of Tuesday, March fourth, through Thursday, March sixth, our committee meetings included the reappointment of directors of the city and county departments. Again, this week, we are in a budget session with city and county and all the directors looking over their budgets and CIP projects or capital improvement projects. If you do want to check out the meetings live or after the recording, it is, again, it's in the chat. I put that website in the chat, that link in the chat. It's www.honolulucitycouncil.org-meetings. The following bills that are of interest to the community is Bill four, twenty-twenty-five, CD one, we established a process to obtain scholarships for city facilities, parks, programs, equipment, and tangible property includes guidelines and procedures to optimize the program for revenue generation. Bill eleven, twenty-twenty-five, providing for the strict regulation of electronic amusement devices to protect public health, safety, and welfare. And it's already passed first reading committee. I did put important websites and links in the chat for everyone, including Councilman Okamoto's monthly newsletter. And also, we have our awesome office manager, Jocelyn, ended up bringing the, bringing physical newsletters to your meeting. Also, the other thing is the last date for real property tax. The most important date is June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five, which is the end of the tax year. If you want to submit testimony and bills for resolutions, it's all in the chat. We have the capital improvement project for District Eight is Newton Neighborhood Park improvements, which includes various repairs of current fence gates on comfort stations and signs. Right now, that project is. We also had a couple of concerns for this month. Constituent contacted us from the Aia District Park baseball field saying that the baseball field is still closed because of a fence. Because of a fence, the construction company used for safety while fixing the gym. We're currently working with the Department of Parks and Recreation to get the baseball field reopened. And another one was our office was contacted about the Waimalu Park requesting locks on the restroom doors during closed park hours due to the misuse of the facilities. We reached out to the Department of Parks and Recreations. They have been notified by us and also the constituent and about the concern. And we also wanted them to do a cleanup on the bathrooms as well on a regular maintenance. That's my report for Councilman Okamoto. If you have any questions, I'm here to help.
Board members, any questions? I got a couple. So this Bill thirty-three that she references in here, to address certain obsolete or unnecessary provisions, what do you mean? What does that mean? Like, what were the unnecessary provisions?
Let me take that question back to Councilman Okamoto, and I can get back to you via email or as soon as I get a response.
Okay, just next meeting, would you be able to address that? And then, and then this Resolution twenty-five-fifty, naming and sponsorship resolution urging the Department of Enterprise Services to pursue the sponsorship of naming rights for Niels Blaisdell Center. Is this, is, my understanding of reading that is like you would rename the Blaisdell as Staples Center or something like that?
I'm not exactly sure about that. I would have to take that question back as well. So renaming of the questions about possibly renaming the Blaisdell Center. Let me take that back to her and I can get you an answer.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, mahalo, Chair.
Okay, also, one other thing. What is her stance on the sewer, sewer, Environmental Services sewer fee?
We're in line with Councilmember Cordero in her response in regards to trying to find different kinds of funding in order to help with, you know, trying to look at what the bill, what kind of, what we can do to help ease that, ease the process of that billing. I know it's a complex issue, and I know that the, it has been going with all the, going around the all the Neighborhood Board for any updates and stuff. So if there's any feedback, I would highly recommend to go to the Town Hall meeting, which is at the end of the month for that. But Councilman Okamoto is in agreement with Councilmember.
Okay, so she's for the service increase?
Yeah, we're just wanting to make sure to find some funding to adjust for that.
Correct, okay, thank you.
Mahalo.
Thank you. Moving on, AIA Community Association?
Hey, just some things to highlight. On March seventeenth, we have our monthly Community Association meeting at seven o'clock, right here in this spot. It is St. Patrick's Day, but it's not a federal holiday. So at least we'll be on a day where the library, we can have access to the library. On March twenty-ninth, I want to remind everybody that's a Saturday. We're having Aia Public Library's book sale, which is in this room. Anybody would like to come and help us set up the night before on Friday? And then or participate in the book sale, we welcome everybody. The books are really cheap, and it's about trying to get the books out there. We try to continue to be vigilant about the city and counties and state legislation regarding the impact of development in Aia and holding our legislators accountable to plan community development. I heard a lot of talk just recently about the sewage fee increases, and that's kind of like a Band-Aid. So in addition to doing Band-Aid work to pay for broken sewers or flowing sewages, we should also be proactive and not develop in areas that are prone to flooding. Got that?
You made it very clear there.
Thank you, okay. I said it nicely. Okay, okay. The other thing is the affordable housing up there is scheduled to open in August. It's going to be completed in August. I'm still. It's going to be completed in August. I'm still trying to schedule a visit, um, because with when we built this library, we had access to the site and we could watch it being developed. Slab by slab, brick by brick, but we haven't seen anything over there. They've got the solar panels up there, but they're supposedly scheduled for August opening. And uh, we should get an update about how they're going to proceed to um decide, take applications for that site. And I guess the last thing I just got a notice about, I mean, just now on a text is is an issue with the library, the IA library, um, the football guys practice in the afternoons over here on this open field. And um, they have no place to use the bathroom. So they're running behind the air conditioning units over here and peeing over there. Because it's not open over here. So I think we're gonna have to, I don't know what we're gonna have to do. We're gonna have, we're planting, we're thinking of trying to plant some trees over there.
Uh, I, I, yeah, I don't think trees and bushes is the solution, but you know what they can't do? Whoever's coordinating that can just reach out to the library here and actually get the key. Cause uh, okay.
Uh, they could rent a powder party.
Yeah, that too. Yeah.
Okay, so I'll, I'll see if I want to bring one day the football coaches.
Okay, alright.
Okay.
Okay. Alright, thank you Claire. Anything? Nope. Alright, board members, any questions for ACA? Okay, let's move on. Alright, uh, moving on to federal and state official reports. Uh, try and keep this pretty, pretty limited because um I want to get to the presentations. So Congressman Case's office.
Chairman, thank you very much. I'll make it really brief.
Okay, thank you.
To report, although I would imagine that you and others who've watched the federal government workings and trappings uh over the last day or so, you'll know that uh trying to see whether or not there's going to be a federal government shutdown, uh partial federal government shutdown. Uh, we'll see what the Senate does. The House did pass a stopgap funding measure. They'll take us at least to the end of September. Uh, but now the ball is in the court of the Senate. See whether or not they will um pass the stopgap budget bill. If that does not happen, Mr. Chairman, uh, government funding will cease at midnight this Friday, and we will have a partial government shutdown. The full effect of it will be felt starting Monday, St. Patrick's Day. So um, if that were to happen, Mr. Chairman, um, we are going to uh help our constituents get past uh federal government shutdown and try to answer questions that are frequently asked. In fact, we'll be passing out such uh information at a uh town hall that Senator Fukunaga is having on Tuesday. Uh, that she will be discussing the impact of uh what will be happening should um Congress not pass the stopgap funding measure. That's a town hall meeting that she is herself having, but I want to also um invite uh others who might be interested, other members of the city council besides uh Councilmember Scott Nishimoto um for the Honoa area on Tuesday, as well as um members of the state legislature who might want to reach out to their respective constituents, which are our constituents, and we can help answer any questions, uh, should there be a partial government shutdown. Hi, Mr. Chairman, members, uh, open to any questions you may have.
Any questions for Congressman Case's office? Alright, committee members, any questions? Uh, ma'am, oh, go ahead, Claire.
Vanessa, could you clarify for us? The budget that they're working on and voting on is a budget that went from Ju- July of twenty twenty four to July of twenty, June of twenty twenty five, right?
Uh, this will be the fiscal year twenty twenty four. There is no fiscal year twenty twenty five budget.
Okay, so it's a biannual budget.
It's, 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 well, it, in effect, it is, I guess. Um, but yeah, it's uh funding levels that were set for fiscal year twenty twenty four, which happened when? Um, in September twenty twenty three, or October twenty twenty three? Um, yeah, that budget carries over.
Okay, so what happens when it comes to July of twenty twenty five?
Well, yeah, uh, yeah. Um, I'm sorry, there's, there's a lot of other deadlines that we need to consider.
It's confusing.
The uh federal fiscal year begins October first, yeah. So um, this stopgap budgeting bill, budget bill takes us to the end of September, which is twenty twenty four's budget, actually. No, twenty twenty five budget was ever considered. Uh, that was put well in the back burner. So um, that's what we're living with right now. Fiscal year twenty twenty four funding levels that started in October twenty twenty three. So, yeah.
There was a bug, right?
I'm sorry?
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're talking between ourselves. Okay, uh, board members, any other questions or committee members? Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, uh, Governor Green's office.
Aloha Chair, board members and members of the community, Janelle Sunny, she representing the office of the governor. Um, I'll make it quick. Um, the governor issued an executive order in February to ex, uh, to establish the operation Hire Hawaii, which is mainly meant to uh hire back to hire the federal workers that have been either laid off, uh, resigned or lost federal funding for their positions. Um, it's an expedited hiring process, fast-tracking some of those, those people that have, already have credentials, but it is open to all other interested parties. If you ever wanted to work for the state government, now's the time because they are spending pedal to the metal in hiring. Um, you still have to qualify, but they're fast-tracking the process, which sometimes can be. There are um recruiting events coming up. Um, you can go to the Department of Human Resources uh website, dhrd.hawaii.gov for more information and how to apply. There's a list of uh vacancies open. And uh, there's a article in the governor's March newsletter, which is in the Google Drive, or you can go to the governor's website at governor.hawaii.gov. And just because I, I work for the Department of Agriculture, just wanted to mention that the Department of Ag has started a pilot program called Akamai Arrival, which digitizes the agricultural declaration forms. It's a pilot project. Not all flights are, are doing it right now. It began in March first, on March first, and will run until May thirty first, and then we're going to assess how that digitized form works. And um, it's actually the easy form if you have a phone or a computer or laptop. So um, that's it for me. Any questions?
Alright, any questions for the governor's office, board members? Alright, committee members, any questions? Alright, thank you ma'am for your report. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Alright, moving on to uh Department of Transportation, Mr. Abbe.
Uh, you didn't share Woods and members of the neighborhood board, sixty hours from the state DOT highways division. Last month's meeting, I mentioned Senator Alfonte informed me of the overgrowth at I A Heights Drive War Pass on the Makai Ever site. I'm happy to report the overgrowth has been addressed. Um, also last month's meeting, I mentioned a trash left by the homeless encampment along Kuleana Road. Um, our homeless coordinator and his crew cleaned up the mess, but we were informed that this area actually belongs to the city. So in the future, uh, we'll refer them to the city. I want to thank Representative Kong for his patience. He called me back in September of last year concerning the overgrowth at the corner of Porno Sheet and Porno Holly Street. Our maintenance crew finally addressed this area. At the January's meeting, I mentioned I received an email from Senator Alfonte concerning the overgrowth at nine nine dash nine one nine Halawa Heights Road that is blocking the resident's sight distance when they exit the driveway. Our maintenance crew finally addressed the area the day after last month's meeting. This, uh, since this area is a safety concern and due to our limited manpower resources, we are looking at installing a low-cost maintenance alternative. One proposal would replace the vegetation with new asphalt, geotechnical material, artificial turf and extending the existing concrete walkway. If the board members or the public does not have any objections, we plan to move forward with implementing our proposed plan. I also want to thank Senator Alfonte for his email on February thirteen concerning the overgrowth on Halawa Heights Road at Miki Oi Place and the damaged concrete swell. The overgrowth has been addressed, and since this intersection is also a safety hazard, if the board members or the public does not have any objections, we plan to solve some kind of low maintenance alternative like asphalt. I am working with our maintenance crew on repairing the damaged swell and report back at a future meeting. I want to thank Representative Shimizu for his March seventh phone call and email about the overgrowth where Ala Awalani Street connects to Mooreland Road. Our landscaping crew addressed the area the next day since the location involves a pedestrian sidewalk. Also, I want to thank Senator Alfonte for his uh March fifth email concerning the overgrowth at Halawa Off-Ramp. I'm working with a district landscaping crew to adjust the area. And also in his March fifth email, Senator Alfonte expresses concern of the excessive graffiti on the exit ten sign on the H five freeway westbound. I am working with our maintenance crew on either removing the graffiti or replacing the sign. And finally, on February twenty eighth, our public affairs office and the local TV news announced that between March first and April twenty ninth, our existing ten red light safety cameras will start mailing warning citations to the vehicle's registered owner when the, when their vehicle exceeds the posted speed limit by more than five miles. Beginning April thirtieth, official speeding citations will be issued. The speeding citation is like a red light citation and is not considered a moving violation. So it should not affect your car's insurance premiums. All fines will be deposited into the Automated Enforcement Program Special Fund that will be used to maintain the cameras. Fines for the speeding citation is like the red light citation with not more than two hundred fifty dollars for the first citation, uh, three hundred dollars for the second and five hundred for the third violation if committed within a twelve-month period on the first violation. H dot is seeking additional funding for, from the legislature to install additional cameras at signalized intersection. Since the red light camera pilot program began in twenty twenty two, HPD has issued almost forty-three thousand red light citations. So when owners are approaching the signalized intersection and see the light turning yellow, they will need to consider that if they accelerate through the intersection while the light is still yellow, they may have avoided receiving a red light citation, but they may receive a speeding citation if they're driving more than five miles per hour over the supposed speed limit. This concludes uh my uh presentation.
Thank you for that presentation. Board members, any questions for the Hawaii Lawrence and Danny?
I had a question. Um, you know, on the mainland, they identify the intersection that have these uh speed cameras or red light cameras. Um, I did not see any in the intersections that we have. Is the the state or city going to put up signage that says this is a monitored intersection?
Uh, yes, um, the intersection does have signs. It, it, it warns the drivers that uh it's a red light um camera. They do have signs. I think I showed it on my uh slide here.
Okay, so now we're gonna put up signs saying that there, it's a speed enforcement camera also?
Oh, that, in that case, all, all it is that the red light camera already had the um capability of, of tracking your speed limit. So all they're doing is turning on the switch and they'll be also um recording your speed. So, but if you want a specific sign saying that it's speeding, um, I would have to go back and ask our program manager. But right now, you just, the switch just got turned on.
Okay, I'm just wondering as far as legal means, if somebody challenges it and it's not identified as speed also, would it hold any uh merit there or would it be considered um something that was not um informed to the public as far as then being monitored at that particular intersection?
Oh, again, you know, we did do a public announcement, warning the public. And um, again, uh, it's just like a, a police officer on the side of the road using his radar, radar gun. He's not advertising if he's there. You know, so.
Thank you.
Similar situation.
And I had another question. You guys are paving, uh, going down Red Hill, going westbound. Um, there's a transition on the black asphalt to that bridge by a little stadium. And that asphalt is settling, so there's a slight bump when you go over that bridge. Is that paving going to address that bump?
Uh, I can go double check. I'll get back to you now. Thanks.
Thank you.
Danny?
Yeah, um, I have a couple of questions. So related to the cameras, is there somewhere online that kind of posts where these things will be added or?
Yes, it's, it's on our H dot um, uh, website.
Okay, mahalo. And then I just have one request. I know you had asked about um if there were no objections from the board or the community regarding um paving um specific areas with either asphalt or concrete. Um, is it possible to find like low maintenance but permeable surface um alternatives to what either asphalt or concrete to just kind of um also be in, be in alignment with what Port of Water Supply has been advocating in terms of recharging the aquifer?
Like, like gravel, right?
Yeah, or, or something like that, if that's possible.
I'll, I'll talk with our O R district about that alternative.
Thank you so much.
Alright, any other questions from board members? Alright, committee members, any questions? Claire? No, nothing. Sorry, ma'am.
Okay, I just have a comment to reiterate what um the board member said. Um, you know, if we're talking about placing an aquifer, more we concrete over, we're not allowing for the greenery and the replenishment of our environment. So it's a cycle. So concrete is very permanent, so it not even gravel, but something green and low maintenance would be most ideal before we get a concrete block straight across. Okay? Thanks. Consider that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, let's move on. Thank you for your report. Uh, State Senator uh Makai's office. Nothing heard? Okay, moving on. Senator Elafonte's office.
Hi, great evening Chair Wood, Vice Chair Mizusawa, members of the IA Neighborhood Board and those in the community. Brandon Elafonte here. With me online is my office manager Jan Salcedo. Um, just a few highlights. Uh, we did pass out some information on the recent updates on fireworks legislation. I'll go into that in just a second. Uh, first of all, I just want to acknowledge uh Mr. Abbe from H dot for all the follow-ups on behalf of the constituents for IA and Pearl City. And congratulations to Mr. Victor Flint on his retirement. It's been great to work with you, uh, Mr. Flint, for all these years, and we wish you well and happy retirement. Uh, so a few updates. First, I'll get into uh the fireworks issue. Um, basically, um, the Senate will be hearing uh House bills that have crossed over or passed the halfway point of our legislative session. Um, bills that remain alive deal specifically with amending definitions as it relates to fireworks, uh, increasing civil penalties and criminal penalties, and also extending uh enforcement for the Illegal Fireworks Task Force and Division. Uh, the currently, um, we did hear bills that would have put bans and caps on illegal fireworks, but unfortunately that didn't make um certain committees and pass the certain deadlines. So what we have left is strictly just on enforcement, changing definitions and uh the Illegal Fireworks Task Force. I did was, also want to mention a few resolutions that I did introduce. Uh, the first specifically has to do with relating to speeding and a state police force. I know we've got a lot of concerns and complaints speeding, especially on the H one corridor from I A to Waipahu, especially between eleven P M to A M on weekends and sometimes on weekdays. Uh, the Senate Committee on Public Safety, Military Affairs and Transportation did pass out a resolution that would look at the possibility of what we see on the continent as it relates to state highway patrol, like California Highway Patrol, to see if that's something that the state law enforcement office can do to complement with the Honolulu Police Department and different counties to enforce speeding on state highways and state facilities. Um, also, I want to mention is that um I did introduce a resolution along with Rep Kong. I know there are a lot of residents there tonight regarding the uh state health uh planning division um that would require them to, uh, those that have a proposal for special treatment, especially in community associations, to require a public hearing before the neighborhood, area Neighborhood Board. Um, that obviously they've come before you Catholic charities have, but this would be a process that would go forward um for future different types of certificate of needs. So we did introduce that. It's been offered and it's been referred to the Committee on Health and Human Services. So that resolution is uh Senate Concurrent Resolution twenty five. And you, I'll put all this information in the chat, so uh the people will have that. Uh, and then two other things I did want to mention is another resolution I did introduce in hearing some concerns. I know you have Professor Kathy Shar from um O triple C that'll be talking from UH about this, but hearing some concerns regarding the release uh of the new jail. Uh, we've offered a resolution that basically would uh ask the department to look at a mitigation plan in terms of where they would release prisoners and not just right outside their facility, but at a, at a different location away from the public and residential communities. And then also looking at putting in a courthouse uh at the new jail. So that's Sen- Senate Concurrent Resolution uh twenty six. And then uh, two last things I want to mention is I know there were some uh concerns as it relates to speeding, but I did uh introduce Senate Bill ninety seven. Uh, this is another. Uh, this is another way to address the issue of speeding which those that have three or more excessive violations within a five year. It'll be considered a class C felony with increase increased penalties and also and also forfeiture of the vehicle. So that bill uh crossover to the House, it was heard uh before the Committee on Transportation and has been reported out. And it still has a couple more hearings to go uh in order to get passed. So that gives another tool for law enforcement. Uh, especially for those speeding on our roadways. And then lastly, uh, to address the uh question that was raised by board member Higa, thank you for that. This is regards to the Maui Maui wildfire settlement. Um, so regarding House Bill one thousand and one. So the Senate, uh, the bill has crossover to the Senate. Uh, keep in mind and for those uh to share a little context that. The Supreme Court on February tenth did rule and allow for the settlement to proceed. Um, there was some. Um, filings by some of the insurance companies. So I just want everyone to be aware that um. Because the Supreme Court did rule and that the state does have to come up with uh their portion. As one of the co defendants in in this settlement case and the sage, the state share will be about eight hundred and seven million. Out of the a little over four billion dollar settlement. Uh, so as we move along for that, we have to determine the amounts, but the attorney general in their testimony did recommend amounts for. The next two biennial fiscal years. Uh, with that, that concludes my report and happy to take any questions. Thank you.
All right, board members, any questions for the Senator's office?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, go ahead, Tracy.
Senator, what is the number for that measure for the speeding forfeiture vehicle bill?
Uh, Senate Bill ninety seven.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Lawrence?
I had a question on S P one six four eight regarding um claims against Horn Electric for outages. What is the status for that bill?
Uh, if you give me two seconds, I can look that up. S B sixteen forty eight.
Right.
Uh, so that bill has passed the Senate unanimously. It's crossover to the House. And it's been referred to committee. Um, and it's a three a three referral committee.
Um, as far as modifying it, is there any way to modify it or is it set as far as how it's written?
Um, that will be up to the House. Um, they have jurisdiction of the bill in terms of changes or amendments. As to what they would like to do and offer that if they wanted to amend the bill.
Yeah, because on here it says that you have to affect more than one thousand um people customers in order to make a claim. But as far as when you have outages in residential areas, you're not going to have a thousand houses out. So it's not going to be fair for the small residential customers as far as all this bill is written.
Understood.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Senator Alfante, I have a question. Has there been any discussion about installing the speed cameras on H one?
H one freeway?
Uh huh.
So there, so I did have a proposal this this session to um. Install speed device cameras on our freeways and creates penalties for destruction of those cameras. Unfortunately, um, it didn't get far and past the deadline. But I know there's concerns with uh folks in the community, especially in IA and Pearl City. We've had requests for people wanting that. So we did pass some resolutions uh in past sessions to expand the red light. Speed camera program to IA and Pearl City if funding is warranted. Uh, but that all depends on funding and how the Department of Transportation expands it specifically on on city roadways, but. For now, um, there's no path forward in terms of this legislative session for speed cameras on highways.
Okay, thank you. Board members, any other questions?
Chair.
Uh, Francie.
Um, Senator Elafonte, thank you for um sponsoring S C R one forty.
You're welcome.
Which is?
That's about the Convention of States um resolution. For. Three items. Um. Fiscal responsibility.
It's okay, 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 I I get that. Okay, I just wasn't sure what what you're, I was like, what are you talking about? Okay, all right, uh, any other questions? Going once, going twice. Okay, nothing heard. All right. Thank you, Senator, for your report.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Representative Ichiyama's office.
Hello, my. Hi.
Hey.
Good evening, folks, uh, Chair, members of the board, members of the community, Shonda Delascerias for Representative Ichiyama's office. As Senator Elafonte mentioned, we are past the halfway point, um, fondly known as crossover. So we have Senate bills in the House, House in the Senate. Uh, according to the House Majority Staff Office, we have three hundred and seventy five House bills. Uh, that have crossed over to the Senate and three hundred and eighty six Senate bills over in the House currently. Um, the referrals have hit the floors. Um, and all the bills are being heard by their respective committees currently. Uh, just a gentle reminder for folks, I know the board may be familiar with tracking and testifying, but for members of the committee. Uh, if you would like to track or testify on bills, you can do that easily through the Capitol website. Um, even if you just want to watch without participating, you're able to view all public hearings on YouTube. Um, this Friday, March thirteenth is the triple referral deadline. So any Senate or House bills with triple referrals must be heard. Uh, in their first committees and filed with their respective clerk's office. Um, other than that, if you'll direct your attention to the front of our community updates, I apologize. I know these CIPs are for other schools in District thirty one. I'm a IA grad, so I'm sad not to see IA on there. Um, but I believe your CIP request will be coming from Senator Elafonte's office. Uh, Rep Shimizu and Rep Kong's office. I'm not going to waste your time with the events on the back because they are over. But on the bottom, you'll see Rep Ichiyama with students from Pearl Harbor Elementary uh during a field trip at the Capitol. Um, and finally, to close out my report, uh, Board Member Whitfield, I know we were talking about H B one one nine four. Uh, during the last meeting. Uh, I'm so sorry I couldn't hand you all those materials in person. Um. I personally think Chair Yamashita runs through uh his amendments really quickly, but I've provided. Standing committee reports that clearly outline every amendment made to the bill. Uh, and if you have any other questions, um, please feel free to contact our office. I'm happy to answer them.
Hey, board members, any questions for Representative's office? Hey, community members, any questions? Okay, nothing heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. All right, uh, moving on, Representative Shimizu office.
Aloha, Carol Capu here for Representative Shimizu.
Ah, there.
Can you hear me?
Now we can, yes.
Okay, great. All right. Um, yeah, so we are, uh, all of the information, our newsletter's in the chat, and I think it's been sent to your. Um, your Google Doc. Uh, Representative is working, uh, we're, as everyone has said, we're crossover and now we have the Senate bills. Uh, Representative is on public safety. Uh, and land, water and land and judiciary and Hawaiian affairs. So very busy right now. We just uh put out our the results from our survey that we sent out and. Uh, top three issues facing our state are cost of living, homelessness and affordable housing. Um, and what air, what attribute, what attributes the most to your cost of living, food, insurance and mortgage or rent? And over seventy five percent said that Hawaii's cost of living has altered my way of life, strongly agree and agrees. So Rep Shimizu is working to try and help bring down the cost of living. Um, none of our bills are currently alive, but he has a few. Um. Few. He's working with others to get some other ways to bring down things like um general excise tax and. Uh, ways to help those who have kupuna that they're caring for with tax credits. So other than that, if there's anything else you have questions on?
Hey, board members, any questions for the reps office? All right, nothing heard. All right, community members, any questions? Nothing heard us? All right, thank you. Thank you for your report. Much appreciated. Representative Kong, welcome. Long time no see, strange stranger.
Yeah, stranger.
Yes.
Board members, community, um. Nice shirts, by the way. Yeah. Um. Um, I have a lot to report, but I'll keep it real short. The stream across the way, Alexander and Baldwin finally start will start this month. To clean and remediate the stream. So it's the fenced area. So anything above uh Malka of the fence, they won't touch. So we started cleaning that area ourselves, but they were gonna do all the remediation down towards the main road. And that's it because we have presentations to do. Uluni? Yeah, to the bridge.
Okay, all right, board members, any question for the reps office, Mr. Kong? Yeah. Uh, who who has a question? Somebody over there?
Okay, oh, okay, all right, uh, thank you, sir, for your report.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Great. Thank you. Good to see you. Okay, all right, let's go ahead and uh without further ado, let's move on to board business and presentations. Uh, we'll start off with the Red Hill closure process update. Thank you all for attending, by the way. Appreciate it. Looking forward to this.
Evening, everybody. Um. Chair Wood, board members, committee members. My name is Scott Malcolm. I'm a member of the Navy Closure Task Force team. And I'm here to give you a short presentation on uh some of our uh some of our past operations, ongoing operations and some things we have. In the future. I've got a chart over here, but given the way the the room is laid out, we'll let uh we'll let it go on camera, but I'll just talk to the items. Uh, we divide our responsibilities into three, three major lines of effort. The first one you'll you'll see on our charts represented above, they're tied to a timeline. And they are the de- those that that line of effort is called decommission. And then we have two uh that are below it, they're on the chart. That uh environmental remediation and communication and those we do all the time, they are ongoing. And will continue to uh to to go as long as we exist. So let me just start off. We, as you know, you're probably aware that last March, we assumed responsibility for the Red Hill mission from Joint Task Force. Red Hill. And uh, the first thing we did was we set about immediately briefing the uh Environmental Protection Agency and Department of Health. On our uh concept of operations to remove the A triple F from the facility. Two weeks later, we successfully removed just over a thousand gallons. Uh, of A triple F and moved it off island and and being able to do that in the first couple of weeks of our existence gave us a running start and we felt like that. On the uh removing that A triple F on the heels of removing a hundred and four million gallons of fuel from there really uh removed some of this. The threat to the to the aquifer and gave us a good running start. And we set our sight on tank cleaning, which is next, and that we're we're in the middle of tank cleaning right now. Um, we have a deliberate four step process in that we clean our tanks in pairs. We started the first pair of tanks, tanks seven and eight last June, and they are currently wrapping up uh step three. So I'll I'll explain the four step process. The we the step one is preparation. And in that phase, we open the tank, we put some water in there to uh to create flowable sludge, we drain that. And that's how we uh, uh, we have a a marine chemist that comes in and certifies the tank is safe to enter. And then um with the approval of our regulators, we open up the tank and we begin to ventilate it. We 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 force air from the bottom of the tank up through the top and it and it exits through the top and is diffused. Into the into the air outside. We have nine air quality monitoring stations that are set up around. Red Hill and they constantly monitor uh the air and especially during degassing operations. We post those uh, we post those readings, as Joanna said earlier. Every hour on our mobile app and then once a day we do a roll up on our website. So. Uh, we have a, we have a limit of of volatile organic uh compounds that we have a thirty eight parts per million. We've successfully de-gassed four tanks so far and our the readings have never gone above one. So we're way down at one and our our safe limit is thirty eight. We've never exceeded that. If we were to ever start beginning to exceed that and it looked like we were, we were um. We were pushing out uh ballin- increasing amounts of VOCs, well then we would, we have plenty of time to stop and turn it off and see what the problem is. Bottom line is four tanks uh de-gassed successfully without issue. We're starting the the third pair of tanks this week. So that's step one is preparation. Step two of the process is to remove the solid sludge. This involves putting in an elevator in the tank that goes down the two hundred and fifty feet. Takes people down to the bottom and we really just scoop it out with shovels. We have folks in the proper protective equipment. They scoop it out in the shovels. We carry the the buckets back up, put it in sealed fifty five gallon drums and transport it off island to a to a safe. Repository in in the states. Step three of the process is pressure washing. That involves setting up the equipment, washing the inside of the tanks, allowing them to dry, validating that they're clean with the regulators. That process is ongoing right now for tanks seven and eight. The next step of the fourth phase process, step four is the tank decommission. And from there, we're gonna, once we validate the tanks clean and everybody signed off on that, we'll remove all the equipment. Uh, that we put in the tanks to decommission them and we will install a lockable steel hatch at the entrance on the bottom. So uh, so far, uh, cleaning the tanks, we've removed uh. A hundred and seventy eight gallons of sludge from the four tanks and then we've also removed safely uh five hundred and twenty gallons of residual fuel. Uh, in and around the tanks, uh, pipes that are attached to the tanks as we as we disconnect those. Those valves and low points will have some fuel collected and we have very safe way uh with with three levels of containment to to uh to capture all that and we've we've uh. We've we've pulled five hundred and twenty gallons, as I've said, out of that. Okay, all this is represented on our mobile app. Uh, if you go to N C T F Red Hill, our mobile app and you look on the menu for dashboard. Our tank cleaning progress is updated there uh every week uh and and at the very longest every two weeks. Okay, so the next thing in the decommissioning timeline is is uh is pipeline removal. And uh, we'll begin doing that later in this year. Our team has been placing equipment and setting up infrastructure to support the pipeline removal. For the last several months. The current plan is to remove all the pipes uh that are in the facility. This is going to be a long, dangerous and complex job. And so we're approaching it very deliberately and safely. We're moving at the. Speed of safety with lots of safety preparations and rehearsals and such. We're still working out the exact start date when we'll begin pulling pipeline out of there, but we anticipate sometime later this summer. Okay, if you'll look down below that, there we're talking about the next line of effort is environmental and remediation. And uh, that is uh the and the first element of that is strengthening water resiliency, which is a fancy way of saying. We're making the joint base Pearl Harbor Hickam drinking water system better. Uh, through ongoing uh repairs and improvements to the infrastructure. And also by uh establishing an alternate set of water, excuse me, an alternate source of water for the system. Um, since November of twenty twenty one, uh, we have been receiving all of our water for the Navy system from the Halaba Shaft, which is six miles away. Uh, we are, as uh Mr. Higa asked about earlier, we are, we are beginning the uh. We're we're, we've installed a water treatment system at the N A at the Navy IA Halaba Shaft and we are trying. We're gonna bring that back online this summer after we get approval from the Department of Health and EPA. And what we'll do is when we get that approval, Mr. Higa, we will know the the flash to bang time from when from approval to. To bringing it back online and we'll be able to give you a refined answer to that question. So uh, we've also began installation of an upgraded uh GAC treatment system at the Red Hill Shaft. And we can, and we continue planning and design of a permanent water treatment facility at Red Hill in the years to come. Drinking, we're gonna, we focus also on uh continuing safe drinking water. If you notice, our uh, our system has benefited from really extensive sampling over the last three years. For two years, we had a program in place called Long Term Monitoring, elevated and increased sampling. Then we extended, we had an extended drinking water monitoring program which lasts for a year. That is ending this this month and we'll be transitioning to compliance monitoring. Which goes back to the 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 standard way that water providers. Uh, sample and and monitor their water system and that includes for lead and copper. Okay, the next, the next part of the environmental remediation line of effort is monitoring and modeling. I talked about air modeling. Air monitoring already during ventilation. Uh, for groundwater monitoring, we've expanded our network of groundwater monitoring wells. From twenty two to forty five and we're we're uh reconning sites for more wells to come. We submitted our ground flow, our groundwater flow model to the EPA this summer and recently received uh. Uh, comments from them that it was uh, that it was valuable in developing an accurate functional model of groundwater flow at Red Hill. They felt like it was very comprehensive and the best supported version of a groundwater flow model that they've seen. You probably know that uh, that University of Hawaii is conducting a trace or die study now and we're paying attention to that. When they produce their, when they publish their report, we'll use that information to further enhance our groundwater monitoring also as well. For site assessment and remediation, this refers to the environmental cleanup and protective actions. The Navy's been taking at Red Hill for years as well as the current. The Navy's been taking at Red Hill for years, as well as the current and future initiatives. We began the process of conducting a comprehensive site assessment of the environment at Red Hill. And that's gonna help us determine the detailed next steps, uh, of, of, and the timeline associated with envi- with safely and deliberately environmenting, excuse me, remediating the environment at Red Hill. Uh, throughout that process, there'll be opportunities for public in, input. Finally, communication, uh, kinda what we're doing right now. Um, this is, we are committed to keeping an open line of communication with the public through various means like this one as we perform, uh, our work to safely enclo- uh, safely close and remediate Red Hill. Um, we have a community engagement plan that's part of the admini- administrative consent order that governs us. And, uh, part of that plan is to do something, uh, do a significant, you know, public event every month. Last month, we had a, a webinar on tank cleaning. Uh, tomorrow night, we're hosting the open house that Joanna mentioned at, from five to seven at K Hee Lagoon. We'd like to see you all there. And then next week, we'll be parti- or next month in April, we'll be participating in the Fuel Tank Advisory Committee. So something big every month, and then we're constantly communicating through events like this on, uh, in between days. At the open house tomorrow night, I, I reiterate my invitation at K Hee Lagoon, five to seven. There will be, all of our experts will be on hand to answer detailed questions about any of these items. I'm a little bit of a generalist, but I'll do my best to answer any questions that you have right now.
Thank you for that. Uh, great brief, actually, and very thorough. Board members, any questions? I'm sure there is. So Danny, go ahead.
Um, I have a clarifying question. You mentioned that there would be a transition from lon- long-term monitoring into standard monitoring, so focusing specifically on lead and copper. What wells or water sources are you referring to first? And to clarify, does that mean that you will not be monitoring for fuel, PFOS, PAHs, which have a, a lifespan longer than the amount of time you've been doing long-term monitoring?
So, um, and I might, my colleague Joanna's here, and I may get her to, to help me answer if I don't get this right. But the, uh, the transition to compliance monitoring is the standard monitoring that all water system providers do, and that includes lead and copper. So that's just part of it. And then, uh, in terms of testing for, Joanna, do you wanna?
So Danny, thank you for your question. So like Scott mentioned, when we transitioned from the extended drinking water monitoring, um, program that we're on right now, we are testing for fuel, fuel, um, I guess, analytes that are in the system. When we move over to compliance, um, testing for those, uh, as part of, it's, it's not part of, uh, EPA's requirements for us to test. However, um, regarding your question about how long fuel can last in the water, that is why we have in place those forty-five, uh, groundwater monitoring wells to see if there is any movement beyond where the spill occurred. And if there is, then, you know, later on down the line, um, that could be brought up in a different form. But, you know, as of right now, the plan is to end extended drinking water monitoring and move to compliance monitoring.
And so this is for the joint base Pearl Harbor Hickam homes, that's?
This is, so this is for, uh, residents and non-residential buildings on the joint base Pearl Harbor, um, drinking water system.
Okay, but the, um, the, um, monitoring wells will continue to test for things like PFOS, PAH, jet fuel?
That, yes, that is correct. And then, um, you also were talking about which water sources we're sampling. So, um, the water sources, uh, we only test, like, for example, the Red Hill Shaft is currently offline. Um, so that wouldn't be part of normal compliance monitoring. It would be the Waiala Shaft in this instance. But once we get those other, uh, sources online, they will be subject to compliance monitoring.
Mahalo. Are you folks still pumping, filtering, and dumping, um, water from the Red Hill Shaft into Halaba Stream? Is that still continued?
So, so we are, um, however, we have reduced the amount of water that's being, uh, discharged into the stream. That water is actually, a good amount of that water is actually being reused to pressure wash the tanks. So we're not, we're not, um, utilizing any new water. It's water that we've actually filtered through the GAC system and is being used, um, if they're actually being trucked, uh, to, sorry, the addits where the actual pressure washing is occurring.
Do you know how much is the extra discharge going into the stream?
So I don't have that exact number for you right now. At, when we first started, uh, the GAC operations, we were about four point five million gallons a day. Um, but, uh, yeah, four, sorry, four point, four, yeah, I, right now, we're about one point two million gallons. So it, understandably, it still is a lot of water, but we're doing our best to, um, you know, reduce that as much as possible.
Do you have an estimate in terms of like how long you plan to do that, or not yet?
I, I don't have an answer for that, but if you come to the open house tomorrow, uh,
Somebody will have it?
Yeah, someone, someone may have the answer.
And then last question in terms of remediation, are there any remediation efforts happening other than natural attenuation? Or are you just letting it go and monitoring what's happening to things in the water?
No, so, um, the, the side assessment and the remediation piece of it kind of fall hand in hand, right? We're assessing the environment right now through like groundwater monitoring, soil monitoring. And that information will, um, will allow us to kinda take a broader look at, at what we need to remediate, right? So we're not only, you know, I, I, I can't say that we're only relying on natural attenuation, but the side assessment will give us the information that we need to further remediate the environment.
So currently, there's no plan for cleanup, is what you're seeing?
I, I can't, I can't say that. That would be an, an answer more for a subject matter expert. Okay, thank you.
Hey, board members, any other questions? Okay, I, I have a couple. So I know back September of last year, there was, um, heated discussions, uh, about the Navy and the Board of Water Supply working together to monitor these wells, to work in conjunction with each other, uh, to, to, to support, um, clean water and the public's interest in that. Where are we at today with that right now? What is your relationship with Border Water Supply when it comes to these activities?
So we did, we did have an opportunity to sit down and visit with them, our leadership and our experts. We sat down with Border Water Supply in December, uh, with their consultants and experts, and we, we reviewed, uh, the analysis of those, um, of those samplings and all that. And, uh, I, we, we got to a consensus there at that point. It wasn't a complete consensus, and we're working back and forth, one-off issues now.
Okay, so, so if I went and asked the Board of Water Supply, uh, like, how do you feel about your relationship with the Navy? Do you feel confident that they would say it's a working relationship at this point?
It's a working relationship, yeah.
Okay, all right, and it's not adversarial?
Uh, no, I don't think so. I think we all want the same thing.
Okay, okay, thank you. All right, um, last thing I have, on your timeline, you have tank cleaning going all the way to basically middle of twenty twenty-seven?
Each, yes.
Okay.
So ea- yeah, each tank, uh, takes about ten to twelve months to go through the four-step process.
Okay, so you've done four tanks up to this point, right? So, in less than a year?
Third pair of tanks is, is starting, yeah.
Right, and there's twenty tanks in total.
Yes.
So you-
Can I clarify one thing?
Okay.
So there, there are twenty tanks in total.
Right.
But six of those tanks have been out of service for a long time.
Okay.
And we are focusing our efforts on the fourteen known quantity tanks right now. And the, the disposition of those six that haven't been used is still a little bit undefined. So we're, we're focusing on seven pairs of tanks at the moment.
Okay, so, so out of fourteen tanks, four are completed. And, uh, so now you have ten left, roughly?
Well, they're not completed. The, the first pair of tanks is in, is in beginning.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
So we, we stagger them in pairs because we only have enough equipment, you know, and capacity to, to, to sta- to establish two tanks at a time.
Right, okay, okay, great, okay, okay, thank you. Uh, thank you guys for your presentation, much appreciated, and, um, look forward to having, seeing you guys back at a follow-up later in the, later, later on. Maybe, probably, maybe next year sometime frame.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, moving on, um, University of Hawaii Community Design Center's final report on O triple C.
If I might, I am Tommy Johnson, Director of DCR. I'd like to correct a couple of things that were said earlier. Can you guys hear me?
Barely. You're coming in a little muffled.
We can hear you.
Can you hear me now? Is that better?
Yeah, that is better, thank you.
Okay, so two things. One, Bettina mentioned earlier that the projected cost for the new O triple C is, uh, nine hundred and forty-seven million. It's actually nine hundred and thirty-seven million considering, uh, construction escalation cost through the completion of the project, which is two thousand and thirty-one. But I have to mention, every month we delay the project is three to five million dollars in construction escalation cost. The second thing is, earlier Senator Elafante mentioned, uh, House Concurrent Resolution twenty-six, which would, uh, request the Department of, of Correctional, Correctional, Rehabilitation, Rehabilitation 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 add a, include a courtroom in the new development of O triple C. I've already spoken to both, uh, Chief Justice, uh, Reckonwald and, and the Court Administrator Rod Miley. And we've agreed to look at putting a courtroom in every new correctional facility we build, not just O triple C. We have a plan to relocate, uh, Kauai Community Correctional Center, and also to build a jail in Kona. So each of those facilities will have a functioning courtroom, uh, for the judges to use, the mostly pre-trial motions. This way, we can cut down on a, which is the most dangerous time for corrections officers, is the transport of pre-trial detainees from the, from the jail to the prison and back again. So we are working on that with, um, both. Uh, I wanted to say that before I introduce Kathy Shar of the U H Community Design Center, who's done excellent work for us. She's the head of the team, and so unless you have questions, I'll now turn it over to Kathy Shar to provide the presentation.
Okay, great, thanks. Thanks, Director Johnson. My name is Kathy Hochar. And one is a good evening to the I A Neighborhood Board and members of the community. I'm here with my team members, Kresha, Dean, and Vernon. We're all from the University of Hawaii Community Design Center. Uh, we sincerely appreciate the opportunity to speak with you all this evening after, um, nearly two years, uh, or two near, two-year process to engage community members and stakeholders around alternative models for O triple C. Um, we are pleased to share that our team published and, uh, shared out the Breaking Cycles final report, which is available for viewing on our Breaking Cycles website. Let's see, hopefully, everybody can see that. Yeah, go for it, Kresha.
See the board or this presentation?
Yeah, it works.
Okay, so our team will go ahead and provide a brief overview of our final report, highlighting key sections to give you a comprehensive understanding of its context. Uh, we can't present our whole report in ten minutes, but we can go ahead and give you a tour of its context and encourage you to review it yourself. Again, the executive summary is a quick read for those who don't have the time to read more. So we have a few key concepts or themes that emerge from this engagement process, which are summarized and presented as key concepts. So from the beginning, our team engaged people about both system reform and facility design at the same time, understanding the relationship between the two. Most of these reinforce the importance of care and rehabilitation before, during, and after incarceration. So the concepts on the left relate to system reform, and these include adopt a public health perspective, prevention as early as possible, strengthen diversion, align supportive housing options, and expand on community partnered reentry opportunities. So these require broad stakeholders to work together to truly establish a continuum of care that includes corrections as just one part. And then the concepts on the right relate to facility planning and design. These include gathering more research, establish a new mission, vision, values, and functions, creating a new identity, start correctional culture change now, require qualifications and, about local knowledge and lived experience, continue community engagement, plan for different population scenarios, uh, build community partnerships, leverage federal funding, and designing for health and well-being of the individuals, the staff, as well as the community. So the report also talks about decarceration as a process of working across sectors to provide community-based care in order to reduce incarceration. So the sequential intercept model mapping process is one part of this. The SIM identifies resources, needs, and gaps in the community, and this has already been done on Oahu and Hawaii Island, offering a strong foundation for system reform.
The report also includes a decarceration toolkit that represents the different programs and facilities needed to provide care for people with different needs at different places along the justice pathway. It conveys the importance of looking at all of these components alongside a new jail. And to emphasize the importance of various components in the toolkit, um, there are case studies about prevention, diversion, correction, and reentry. We recommend more investments in these programs and offer examples locally and around the country. We also provide information on trauma-informed design, which incorporates aspects of trauma-informed care to design a healing and safe environment for people who have experienced trauma. This includes both incarcerated individuals and their correctional staff. We want to point out that there is a section focused on staff well-being as a key component to a facility that operates with respect and dignity for all. Knowing that correctional staff have higher mortality rates, suicide, divorce, and health issues, it's critical to plan and design for employee well-being. We can be there, or we can be more attentive to the well-being of those in custody. The report also includes Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander concepts of health and well-being, and this relates to the feedback pointing to cultural knowledge and practices as an approach to healing.
In terms of our engagement overview, U H CDC held one hundred and twenty talk stories, eighteen site visits and listening workshops, three symposiums, three public exhibits, six co-design workshops, and flat community of practice meetings to reach incarcerated men, their families, caregivers, health practitioners, advocates, spiritual and cultural leaders, elected officials, and more. And the report also summarizes the team's visits to health, housing, and treatment facilities, co-design activities with community organizations and previously incarcerated individuals, exhibitions, youth engagement through interactive board games, symposium, and community of practice meetings. And for this journey map right here, people reminded us that the processes and programs related to a new facility are more important than the physical facility itself. We compiled feedback into this journey map that diagrams the experience of moving through a new model for corrections with coordinated diversion, intake, incarceration, transition, and reentry with access to services throughout.
Members has a cell phone, can you turn that off?
Uh, many people felt that the new facility needed a new identity to reinforce a new mission and vision. So the team collaborated with a Hawaiian language expert, uh, Keoni Kalakolio and Auntie Keja and Ume Aloha Gomez to review the site's cultural history and community feedback, proposing a new name, Ke Aloha Pono Pono, a path to righteousness and unity, i vi kahi, referring to an ancient vi kahi heal that once occupied the site. So the three of them talked about the need to transform the site from one of human sacrifice in ancient times to one of healing. This place transformation would mirror personal transformation in the new facility, and the name also recognizes the convergence, convergence of two streams, Kamana Nui in the north and Kamana Iki in the south, which converge just south of the site. Based on feedback, the team also created a kaikoi framework from the kaikoi, which is historically grown exclusively in the Halaba Valley. It was used to represent a conceptual design framework in which it all begins at the root of the kalau with the nutrients in the ground. Once all the nutrients are in place, the individual can begin to grow and make the necessary amends and relationships with family, staff, victims, community, the aina, and a kua, and the optimal result is a transformed life. So this feedback also led to design principles that emerged, uh, starting with adopt a holistic health-centered, trauma-informed approach, nurture relationships, connect to aina, ensure safety, strength-based approach, opportunities for improvement and empowerment, support learning, and demonstrate respect. These principles would act as a lens for all design decisions, and the feedback was also synthesized into design considerations.
Additionally, people suggested a number of design elements that could be integrated into future facilities. Um, these could be low-cost amenities developed in partnership with community groups and funded by grants or donations. These elements are compiled under nine themes: Malama Aina, Spiritual Reconnection, Kiki Tu Kukuna, Ritual and Practice, Making and Makana, Art and Music, Sustainability and Resilience, uh, Learning and Working, and Restorative Landscapes. For example, there could be areas with loi, um, laao, lapaao, uh, native plant nurseries, or native medicinal plants. Or there could be elements promoting connection to sacred sites and to place such as an auhu, pohaku, or an, uh, Hawaiian star compass. Um, people want comfortable spaces for all ages and mobility needs to help individuals maintain family relationships. Or spaces that honor traditional rituals and practices, such as a meditation space, hula mound, outdoor amphitheater, or a space for Makahiki.
It's also essential to support skills and opportunities that help individuals to give back to their community. For example, providing a holly building space, kitchen for culinary programs, and a shop for woodworking. Or for art and music, providing creative spaces for murals, sculptures, environmental graphics, and musical practice and performance. These spaces would allow the talents of the individuals to come through. For sustainability and resilience, people wanted the new facility to be sustainable and resilient by carefully considering energy, waste, water, and material use for future generations, as well as the capacity to operate through disasters. The men that we talked to in prison also expressed an interest in learning more about sustainability. As for learning and working, people also advocated for educational spaces such as flex class, use classrooms, workshops, technology access, and warehouses. workshops, technology access and warehouses to support an individual's education and job training. For restorative landscapes to promote health, exercise and enhance well being. There could be walking paths, courtyards, indoor plants or murals of natural landscapes, which have been proven to have health benefits. And finally, for our site design approaches, finally, the report also includes our three proof of concept designs, approaches that represent alternatives and aspirations. And a disclaimer, these are not technical or resolved designs and do not incorporate the highly technical, functional and safety requirements, regulatory or budget restrictions that AHL must deal with. Please consider these community visions. And the three proof of concept design approaches are a step up campus that consists of a series of buildings that individuals progress through. Individuals move towards the transition center at the other end before exiting the facility and returning to society. A community resilient center with a compact main building and a health hub designed to minimize the facility's footprint. And the third being a community resource hub, which proposes an outer hub for entry, courtroom visitation and reentry services and inner hub for programs and services and housing at the end.
And finally, we want to thank all of you for welcoming welcoming us into your community. We especially want to thank Chair Wood and Claire Tamamoto for bringing us into all of your meetings. We want to especially thank Auntie K. How and Uncle Bruce for welcoming us at Loko Ia Paial and sharing their knowledge and wisdom and their maulelo. And every time challenging our team to think harder. We have a long list of partners who helped us through this and they're all listed in our report. And of course, we want to thank DCR for entrusting us with this work. And with that, we are open to questions.
Okay, board members, any questions for U H? I'm just curious, my question is, how do I get a two week vacation at that facility? So it looks great. I can tell you guys did put a lot of work into it. So that make a light of that, but but it looks.
That's what people envisioned. Yeah.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, any questions?
Chair Wood?
Uh, go ahead, Paul.
Yeah, I had the same concern, but on a serious basis. You know, the what you have proposed with all the flowery language and and great designs looks marvelous. But you know, compared to our average high schools, it's like 10 times better. So you know, although your goals are very nice, the practicality is is that it's a something that is looks like it's very too much expensive for no proven benefit. We all want to stop the the recidivism rate, which is about 50% right now. But unless you really, really, really reduce the recidivism rate, all the money and flowery language and ideals aren't going to mean anything.
If I might interject, this is Tommy Johnson, Director DCR. So we're clear that the work of the U H CDC has been far reaching. They did more than we could possibly imagine. And I want to make clear safety and security and good governance of the facility is first and foremost in any correctional facility, whether it's a jail or prison. And while the U H T D T made a numerous recommendations that are really good, we have adopted some of them in the in the facility design, the planning and design of the facility, including the reentry efforts, including the programmatic efforts. But what we have to understand is that the jail setting is not a prison setting. And for the most part, we have people for five days or two weeks or a year at the most for sentence misdemeanits. And so what we will try to do is provide as much services and programs as we can to that limited population, trying to make sure we reduce the the cycle of incarceration. And so while U H T D C provided a number of recommendations, some of them will not be incorporated into the new jail. But we appreciate the efforts because they've done more than we could possibly imagine. And we have asked them to do some tasking orders moving forward to continue to help us as we develop the facility more in the planning and design. So I want to make it clear to the public that the safety and security of the of the community and the facility first and foremost, in a particular Sessiak and current Resolution 26, we asking the department regarding the release of folks. We have already determined that we will take the offenders who have been released to the nearest bus depot. But those being released to programs, the programs will pick them up. But I don't want the the community believe that that the facility will be less secure. It's actually be more secure than most facilities that we currently have. So I thank U H T D C for their work and their continued efforts on our behalf. And I thank the community for understanding that we are trying to make sure that we provide a program and services to reduce recidivism and to reduce the cycle of incarceration. But at the same time, our primary concern is safety and security of the facility and the community at large. So I want to thank U H T D C C. And I want to also thank the the Neighborhood Board for allowing us to provide a presentation to them. And any questions you may have, please direct them to our office and we'll make sure we provide answers to them. Thank you very much.
Director, this is Russell Tsujin. I have a question. I've heard statements like this is a jail, not a prison before, and I am confused. You're moving OCCL to Halava. Is that correct?
We're moving the
OCCL prisoners to
We're moving the jail, we're moving the jail to a site near the Halava Correctional Facility, which is almost a half a mile away. Respect with
Halava Station is right up the street.
No, no, we're moving it to the other side. So the quarantine, the animal quarantine station has to move particularly the kennels before we can bring heavy construction in, heavy construction equipment in. But the jail is for pretrial detainees, sentenced misdemeanors that are there no more than a year and those that are transitioning out of the prison system into the work furlough system, who are going out of the system, it won't be at the same location as Halava. Where the prison system like Halava, Waiva Correctional Facility, Kulani Correctional Facility, they honestly hold all convicted felons who are convicted for Class C, which is five years or more, Class B, 10 years or more, Class A, 20 years and Class A, which is also
The question, the question, Director, is simply this, are you moving the prisoners from OCCL to Halava?
No, we're moving it to a site, we're moving it to jail to a site near Halava Correctional Facility, not to the prison itself.
Okay, so the prisoners in, what are people inmates right now at OCCL, are you saying are less than one year, serving time for less than one year?
No, the difference between the inmate, the inmate is a person who sentenced to five years or more. That person who's coming back through the system is going through work furlough, Lamaka work furlough program across the street from
So the ones at OCCL sent sentenced to more than five years. Where are they going?
No, the people at O triple C are pretrial felons, sentenced misdemeanors who are more who are young year, one year or less. Those coming back to, right, with those coming back to the program, we're going through the work furlough program, the work furlough program at at the at the Lamaka work furlough program across the street from O triple C. There's nobody at O triple C proper who is there for more than a year.
Okay, and that's who you're relocating to Halava area.
We're relocating to a site near Halava Correctional Facility, but not at the same plot of land. It's actually, it's actually on the other side of the highway on the on the on the right of the animal quarantine facility.
Hold on, I got this. Just give me a second. Stop, 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 stop. Thank you. Okay, all right, let's uh, let's go ahead and move on. Thank you. Thank you guys for your report. Much appreciated. Just just for U H, I would recommend when you do these briefs to like not do the wall of texts. It's very hard to read when you guys do those. So recommend when you do these briefings, if you do them for future use, maybe just put the bullets and then talk to the text, we are talk, you know, to the the minutia of it. But the wallet text was not helpful at all. So couldn't read anything, honestly. So, okay, thank you. All right, let's go ahead and move on. Okay, so we're going to do a discussion and motion on the establishment of the five bed special treatment facility for Catholic charities intending to operate, and I'm not going to talk about the address here, but so let me lay some ground rules real quick. It is 9:20 now. This is this, this discussion will end at 9:50 regardless. All right, so probably around 9:45, I will ask to terminate the discussion and then we will be voting. All right, so so with that, also keep in mind there will be no name calling, there will be respect of people's opinions. If anybody wants to lay accusations that are on a personal nature, you will be asked to leave the facility immediately. Understand? Okay, good. All right, so let's go ahead and move into this. So board, we have a I'm going to ask anybody to make a motion on the approval for the establishment of a five bed special treatment facility, Catholic charities intending to operate on the street listed in the on the agenda here. So does anybody want to make a motion?
I I move that we didn't.
I don't need any comments. If you're going to make comments in the crowd, you're going to be asked to leave. Okay? All right.
I I move that we deny the request to make that facility in the location stated.
Okay, so the motion on the table, so the motion on the table is to deny the approval of the establishment of a five bed special treatment facility, Catholic charities intending to operate at the street address that is located on their agenda. Is there a second for that? Hey, there is a second. Okay, now we're going to go, Russell is the second. Okay, now we're going to open the floor for discussion. Does any board member have any questions? Go ahead. Okay. I'm good with that. Yeah, okay, so so oppose, change the terminology from deny to oppose. Okay, all right, Mr. Glenn, go ahead.
Yeah, um, the Catholic Charities organization has some good goals and good people. But you know, it has to be fail safe. And there's no way to guarantee that. There are people that get out of the high security area at the mental health hospital in Kaneoli. Remember that guy actually even got on an airplane to the mainland. They had all sorts of good restrictions there. We have people who escaped from O triple C. So no matter how good the security systems proposed are, they're not going to be fail safe. And if I have my wife, my daughter, my granddaughter in that community, I couldn't live with myself for allowing this risk to happen in my community without objecting to it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Higa?
Um, Catholic Charities is talking about a certificate of need. Um, is there any update on that, whether it was approved or denied?
Uh, homeowners, is there a representative from your group that could talk to that?
We did have a public hearing with Dr. Lewin on Friday, February 28. And at that time, Dr. Lewin had told us that he would have made a decision by this past Friday. He then emailed us and said that he will not be making his decision. He has to gather all of our testimonies and concerns and send it to his Attorney General. And then he will get back to us maybe by the end of this week to let us know his decision or what what happens after that. There is a certificate of oh, wait, what was the question? Did I misunderstand?
Now, what was the status of that certificate of need? Because if it's denied, and this is a moot issue, they're not going to put it there, right?
Right, correct. But the decision hasn't been made yet. Actually, we asked him to defer his decision also so that AIA Board could meet and you know, either oppose or approve, recommend this special facility being placed in a neighborhood house that is in close proximity to all the neighboring homes, like approximately 10 feet away.
Okay, so as far as when the board votes, how much weight does it carry with Dr. Levin?
Dr. Lewin, we, he is waiting for this. He is waiting for your decision.
Okay, thank you.
Or recommendation. Thank you.
Uh, any other questions, board members? Everybody has received the emails, the information, some then not, like Jane, I didn't wasn't able to get it to you because I tried three different emails and I don't think any of them went to you. But you have read over this since we've been doing this meeting. Uh, is there any questions? We have Catholic charities here as well, too. So if there's any questions board members have for them, this is now the time to ask. Go ahead, Jane.
Uh, my question is for the Catholic Charities representative. This goes back several months ago, but why did they choose to not go through the permitting and planning? People follow in the count.
Yes, so we did go through the city process, but because it's a special treatment facility, it's a different permitting process than with other types of facilities. So that's why there's this certificate of need process versus the city process.
So what we what what, in terms of the discovery piece that I was performing, what we found was was that there's a permitting process at the state level and not necessarily at the city level. And so that's why we weren't informed because DPP knows to inform us about these kind of facilities going forward, right? Because we've dealt with these in the past. Because it was state, that didn't happen. And that's why Senator Alafonte had mentioned about readjusting that process, right, at the state level. So that way we are informed and hopefully we can result, you know, head off these kind of issues in the future, right?
So the city, sorry, if I could just make one more clarifying point. So the city part of it is just a zoning and then they refer the rest of it to the state for this certificate of need process. Correct, it's pending a decision by Dr. Lewin.
And why didn't you do that before you closed on the property?
Because we have to get the property, obtain the property and it has to be inspected. There's all these steps that come prior to that. And so there's all these inspections that were required by the city to make sure that we have the proper electrical and all these other building things before we can apply for that certificate of need.
Hi, good evening. Are you Sarah Antone?
Yes, I am.
Yeah, sorry, name mentioned several times in the documents, the documents that I got. You're the representative from Catholic Charities and and you folks decided to purchase the property without even talking to the any of the neighbors, even though you always intended not to use it for residential purposes, but to operate this facility. Is that right?
Yes, we didn't speak with the neighbors.
I mean, I understand this may not be legal, but you then have a thought cross your mind that you should talk to people in a residential community? That you're going to operate something other than a residence, a house, like where you live or where these people are.
I think in general, the experience of social services that when we take it to the community, there will always be feedback and opinions about what is what we are doing, you know, because there's a lot of work that is going on that I think people are not fully aware of it. And it is being done in the community, in every community and in multiple, I guess, neighborhoods, even in this community. But no, the short answer is no, we did not go to the neighbors to let them know and to ask if
And merely because it's not required by law, that's really the reason?
No, that's not that. No, that's not. We just did not go through that process of going door to door and asking, you know, we're going to, we're planning to do this. Are you okay with that?
Well, I know Catholic Charities does a lot of development. They have a lot of experience in developing land. When you develop land, you go through a process, whether even if it may not necessarily be expressly required by law, you still go out of a process. And one of the bigger ones is community outreach, to talk to the community. Were you planning to have a facility, for example, or to develop land, for example?
Yes, correct. So we So we've made ourselves available to the community, we've gone door-to-door after...
After the purchase?
Yes, correct. And to the various board meetings to answer questions and to inform people.
So it was your guys' decision to purchase, close the purchase before any of that?
It was our decision to, yes, purchase.
Uh, any other questions? Danny?
Um Sarah, so like, let's say the certificate is, is not approved, what, what does your folks' process look like after that? Because from, I think from previous discussions, um, I can't speak for everyone, but I think many of us are on board with the work that you folks do. And so I guess my question is, you know, like, if the certificate is not approved, what, what are your folks' next steps?
So there's an appeals process, and we will appeal, um and then we will look at what our options are, because this is a much-needed service, and that is what the Department of Health has told us, it's much needed, so we will continue to do the work somehow. We will just need to figure out how and where. But understanding that if it doesn't work out in this location, it's a long process where we have many vulnerable youth who are waiting and not able to access services as long as we are not open and taking care of them.
Right now, Nuanu is the only facility in operation doing this type of work?
That, that facility is no longer open because um we moved from there to the current facility.
So there's currently nothing?
Correct, this level of care certainly currently has nothing.
So, 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 so services have not started?
Correct.
What kind of services will you be providing? And, and what kind of um activities that gonna create for the neighborhood?
So, the kind of service we're providing is called community-based residential for the Department of Health. So we get referrals from the Child and Adolescent Mental Health Division. And I want to make clear that that's different than the judiciary process where there are people who are convicted of crimes, who need intervention because of that type of criminal behavior. These are kids that need mental health and trauma support because of things they have experienced in their lives and because of their own biology in some cases. And so we provide a community-based, family-home-type environment for these kids to get treatment in. And we do, we do not necessarily engage the community in activities, but we do take the kids to activities with partnerships we have.
And so will these children be living in the residence?
Yes, they would live there, yes.
And how many children do you expect to uh be serving in this residence?
It's a maximum of five at a time.
And how, how many adult supervisors are there going to be for these five children?
There are a minimum of two adult supervisors at all times, and sometimes we increase that if it's necessary for the number of kids. Um and then we also have someone who lives on property, he's here today, he lives there with his wife, so he's always there um in overnight hours, in addition to the two staff.
And what kind of other, I mean, what kind of traffic do you expect uh would uh affect this residence? I mean, in, you know, our normal uh family living there, you mean, people coming and going to work or school, or what kind of activity do you anticipate would be occurring at this residence?
So the times that there would be traffic is just when we have our staff changing shifts. Um so that's typically, I want to say, two, three times a day, maybe. Um other than that, we don't have um very many family members or anything like that that come. Um, we, and we don't do visits at the home with family. We typically take the youth out, or if they do have family, they'll come and get them and take them out. Um so it's just when our staff are coming and going. We have um, you know, made a commitment to be very mindful of the parking and all of those neighborly things, and so we have been doing that already. And when I receive any kind of call that there's anything going on, you know, someone has parked not right in front of our home, I call them and they will move immediately.
And so what kind of uh, uh, you know, what kind of traffic do you anticipate?
Minimum.
Not, minimum, uh, minimum?
Correct.
I mean, and what hours during the day is this, will this occur, and will it be five days a week, seven days a week?
Yes, it's a, it's, the kids live there, so it's on, it's twenty-four-seven, there are people there. Um, and so there are people there awake, working twenty-four-seven, every single day of the week. But like I said, we only change over staff maybe three times a day, I want to say, and so that's the only time people are coming and going from the home.
So are these children, uh, so that they're not living there with their families? They, they are referred to you and, and so they will be living in the house with adult supervision?
Correct, they're, they are not with their families.
And the maximum is five?
Correct.
And what are the ages of the, of the children that you would be serving there?
Twelve to seventeen.
Thank you.
Okay, Board members, any other questions? Jane? Lauren's after that.
Do the children go to public school?
Not while they're in our care, but typically before they come to our care, they are.
And what is that property, property currently zoned for or zoned as residential?
Yes, but now with the city, it's zoned as a strep, special, specialized treatment facility. We have to go through that process.
Before you bought the property?
No, immediately after we bought the property, we had to go through the zoning process, inspections, things like that, and then it went to this certificate of need process, and that's the final step.
Okay, just, just clarify for me, and why wasn't their certificate of need acquired before?
It, it's not possible. It's not possible. They have to have a facility that is properly zoned and passed inspection before they will consider the certificate of need.
Does Catholic Charities have any experience at all in running this type of facility?
Absolutely. We've been running it for, I, I don't have the years off the top of my head, but it's more than twenty years, and we have never had safety issues with any of the neighbors. And Mr. Wood confirmed that with our previous neighbors up to, I would say safely, he can say that, up to what, ten years or plus? Um, it's, it's, yeah, so although it may sound a little bit scary on paper, you know, the, the safety issues that I think are potential have not been realized in our twenty years of experience. So even when um Miss, Mr. Glenn, when you mentioned about people escaping, it's, it's not that kind of facility. Um, it's a residential home for these kids to get support, and they come to us voluntarily. So they're told that they are coming to our care and to this kind of a program, and they agree. And so even the um incidence of kids, what we call eloping, running away, are very minimal.
Yes, that's true.
Lawrence?
Yeah, I haven't been to the site, but what is the physical distance from your wall to the neighbor's wall?
Maybe, maybe um Mr. Wood is better at distances.
Um, and from what I saw from the pictures that, and, because Francie and I, we took a tour of the, basically, every property that surrounded this particular residential unit. And I think the, the closest neighbor um from like a, like, from the house to house was probably about fifteen, twenty feet.
Okay, the reason I ask is as far as uh noise levels at night, being that we're in Hawaii and it's a cool night, everybody leaves their windows open.
Yeah.
But as far as any uh noise issues, which you cannot predict, because it's gonna be something in the future, um is that something you can address later by like air conditioning the whole, or does it have air conditioning?
Yes, absolutely. It has air conditioning, and we have solar panels to run that air conditioning, so we can close it up if we need to. Um, I think Mr. Wood can speak to that, there have not been that many noise complaints from our previous neighbors. You know, it does occur, um, for sure, but there, it wasn't like an abundance of noise complaints. And um our kids, they follow a very um kind of rigorous schedule, and so we have a bedtime, and they do follow it, and what, you know, once they're accommodated to it, um, from about eight o'clock, it's very quiet at our home.
Because I think on your Nuanu facility, the homes are farther than fifteen feet, right?
Yeah, I mean, um, so we, we had a neighbor that was maybe, uh, maybe like twenty, twenty-five feet, I want to say. Um, I'm not good at measuring, and I don't want to give wrong information, but a little bit further than what it is now, but I wouldn't say it was a significant difference. We still were in a very tight residential community, um with homes all around.
Thank you.
Uh, Board members, uh, oh, Brett?
Mr. and Mrs. Yenbe would respond, I think they wanted to. Can I? Or, not sure what her name is.
My name is Laura Chong, and I'm a resident at the Royal Summit. Um, it appears to me that some of you have not read the con, which was provided to you, and that really gives you a really good description of the facility. Uh, Sarah did not mention, uh, they're all male boys. Uh, they may be there for maybe a minimum of a year, is that correct? At a year's time. They are sexually abused or have some sexual problem, chemical imbalances or whatnot. They must be accompanied outside of the home at any given time, so they're not able to, you know, use the outdoors pretty much by themselves. The, the home is pretty much taken up the whole size of the lot, so there's really no yard, so they're gonna be cooped up in that property. Um, however, these boys may leave the facility on their own at any given time. The con or the um, what is that document that we sent to you folks? The Child and Adolescent Mental Health describes fully the program, which we were not provided with. This has a bigger description under, I think it's paragraph V, that is not described in the con, is that correct? There's more description in this document. Are you, oh, okay, well, it does describe your whole program in there. Okay. So, the, the main issue is risk to the community. Um, it's almost like, you know, with the short-term rentals, you buy into your, you buy your home, you're in a residential community with a zoning residential. Okay, so they're clamping down on short-term rentals, right? Because you bought in there, you're gonna live there. You don't want transient traffic. We bought our properties knowing it's residential, okay? Catholic Charities is stating it's not a business because they got past the zoning, being able to be classified, it's only five or more boys, so the city passed them through, my understanding, and they're still considered residential. But you are a business, correct? Okay, but I believe Catholic Charities is a business. So downright, we have a business being operated in a residential community, and we inherit this risk. So they cannot guarantee us that it's not gonna happen. We have asked for documentation showing the new Nuanu property, how it compares to this property, the program. We have not been provided any documentation. We have asked for, um, besides that, I can't remember the other thing we asked for. Okay, okay, sorry. Um, okay, but anyway, in any event, also, the community is affected, the home across the street was in escrow. The buyer has canceled because of this. And if this facility goes through, it becomes where we have to disclose per Hawaii statute in disclosure of a material fact which affects values in our property. But risk is the highest measure that we're looking at. And if you cannot compare and show us how your facility, the job description was run in Nuanu compared to this one, how am I to believe that this is going to be operated in the same manner? In any neighborhood, it's not just Royal Summit, to me, no other neighborhood be subjected to this. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, thank you. Um, okay, uh, I do want to make one clarifying point to her comment. When, when the, the children do leave, they will, they will have one of the staff members following them or, or walking with them until they reach a, a point to where they're considered outside the neighborhood, and then HPD will be called, and they will be basically treated as like a run, a runaway at that point. Okay, so when they do leave the facility, even though they're, they're allowed to leave the facility, there will be a staff member that follows them during that period of time. And that was collab, I, I actually talked to the residents down in Nuanu, and they corroborated that as well, too, and said, yeah, that is exactly what happened when a, a child did leave the property at that point. Because it happened twice at the Nuanu facility. Okay. Uh, one more que, hold on, hold on, sorry, you'll have your chance. One more question, Russell, and then we're hitting the timeline. Go ahead.
I, Sarah, I've, I've seen evidence of this withdrawal of the sale from escrow, uh, and I probably, you probably heard about it. Check for... What? Being that you're a representative of Catholic Charities and supposed to be a charitable organization, has they, have they decided to be willing to voluntarily compensate these neighbors for any lost sales or any devaluation of the property, short of actually going to litigation? That's my question to you, as Catholic charity, Catholic church, right? I mean, or are you gonna just sit, sit back and pretty much say sue? Because they have a claim.
Okay, so I, I'm not totally clear, but I'm gonna try to answer as fast as I can. So we are um not equipped or prepared to pay anyone, you know, um, lost money or anything like that. Um, I, I would say that I think in Nuanu, I don't think the property values went down, and I think if you look at the homes around, that would show that. And I just want to make a clarifying point, if I am able, of how the kids come to us. So I want to be clear that we do not decide alone that these kids come and that this is an appropriate level of care for them. They have a whole team of psychiatrists and medical doctors and clinical staff who work very closely with them to make those decisions, and we have similar staff that assess the kids to make those decisions, all in the, the interest of making sure that, one, the kids are getting exactly the care they need, um, and, two, that we are ensuring that the risk is minimal in the community. So I just want to make sure that everyone knows that we don't make that decision our own. Before the kids come to us, they are thoroughly assessed by medical professionals and psychiatrists.
Uh, the, sorry, sorry, your guys are, nope, sorrys. Hold on, if you want to continue, sir, I'm gonna, sir, sir, I'm gonna ask you to leave. Okay, thank you. Okay, all right, discussion period is over, we're at nine forty-seven, allowed to run for two more minutes and, on top of what was already uh previously talked about. So, uh, with that, let's go ahead and do uh, uh, voting. If you are unsure about any of this, um, you know, you have the ability to abstain. Um, so just be aware of that, okay? So with that, let's go ahead and move down to do the vote, let's do a roll call. Okay. Yeah, can you repeat the motion, please?
The motion, the motion by a member Glenn is to oppose the Catholic Charities facility operating in IA, opposing the approval of the, of the con, the certificate of need for this five-bed special treatment facility.
Is anybody unclear on that? Okay?
Oh, Mike?
Yes. If you vote yes, you are opposing. Correct. Okay, let's go ahead and do a roll call.
You can also abstain. Okay. Anderson?
Aye.
Arkaki?
Aye.
Burgess?
Absent.
Clark?
Absent.
Esperitu?
Aye.
Fitch?
Abstain.
Glenn?
Aye.
Higa?
Aye.
Imamura Uru?
Aye.
Mizusawa?
Aye.
Sugimura?
Aye.
Suji?
Aye.
Kaalan?
Abstain.
Abstain. Whitfield?
Abstain.
Abstain. Wood?
Abstain.
On a vote of nine ayes, zero nays, and four abstentions, uh, the motion has been adopted.
Okay, thank you. All right, with that, uh, let's go ahead and move on. We will move on to, uh, board reports. Uh, from the executive side, uh, I want to report for May, uh, put on your, oh, I'm sorry, geez, I skipped the minutes. Approve, okay, so let's move on to approval of the written summary for video record, uh, Tuesday, February eleventh, twenty twenty-five. Any adjustments to the minutes as they are posted? Okay, no objections, minutes are approved. Okay? Okay, moving on to board reports, uh, on the executive side. I don't know if you guys saw the email, but I am setting up a tour of the Halava Two facility that's across from Pearl Harbor, uh, that will happen in May. Uh, I need your guys' inputs on that so that I can give them the number of people that will be attending that, okay? Not yet, so I will get that for you, but it will... Uh, I need your guys' inputs on that so that I can give them the number of people that will be attending that. Okay? Not yet. So I will get that for you, but it will be in May. If you're interested in attending, let me know so that way I can, uh, make sure I give the right number counts. Go ahead. Okay, good, okay, I've got one already. Right, two myself, okay. Um, uh, but in May, we will do that. So that is why we weren't able to get in there like last month or up to this month. But in May, they will be ready for us without us having to wear those protection gear. Okay? Okay, great. Okay, uh, community relations and publicity. Okay, nothing, okay? Francie? Mike? Mike, please.
Um, yeah, so I've been wanting to try and put together a social media page like what our former board member, Alen, had. But this is the most members we ever had at one point in time, so we can all take a picture together tonight so that we can actually, we can have something to use as a base, so I can go ahead and try and put another social media page back up for us again.
All right, so stick around right after this so we can take a quick picture. Uh, okay, Parks and Recreation. Paul? Okay, all right, and Kimo's not here for planning and zoning. Francie, Military and or Governmental Affairs?
April 16th is the next Pearl Harbor Hickam Kalawal Rap meeting.
Okay.
At Wahoo.
Okay, all right. Uh, Lawrence, Environmental and Utilities. Okay, and Danny, Education and Culture?
Um, Ho'ola'ho'ia Kalawal Work Day this Saturday and every third Saturday.
Okay, thank you. All right, with that, uh, next meeting will be, um, Tuesday, April 8th, two days before my birthday, by the way, I'm just saying.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, yeah, and 7:00 PM here at the IA Public Library. Okay, and with that, rebroadcast is on a Lelo, and thank you all, and adjournment. Done.
Okay, I just want to let you know if you have to go up Ia Heights, pass...